The posted time for the special and annual town meetings for the Town of Hanson, having come and a quorum having been achieved, I now call the special or the annual town meeting to order. First off, as always, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And as we always do, I like to begin the meeting by remembering those neighbors that we've lost in the previous year. So if you could please join me in a moment of silence to remember the passing of Judith M. Collins, Margaret T. Cameron, James L. Daly, Thomas J. Powers, Sr., and Marilyn Joyce Cartel. They were all true and faithful public servants, so if we could just have a moment of silence. Thank you. I'll make an announcement about this later on in the meeting, probably at the very end, and I know you'll all still be here. But there is an election coming up, May 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and it will be right here at the Hanson Middle School. So look forward to seeing all of you there. You'll also notice that there's some staging back here. I was hoping it was going to be my podium for the night, but people pointed out that might be ostentatious. So, but it is staging for a play that is being performed here on May 20th and May 21st, and it is Prince-- a Space-- pardon me?
Space 21st and our election.
Well, we'll figure this out. But regardless, the middle school students will be prepared to do a play called The Space Princess Wars, and it sounds like it's going to be a lot of fun. I was hoping I'd get a role, but they said I was too old. But at this point, it's Friday, May 20th, at 7:00 p.m. is definitely the time it's going to be done. I'll leave it to everybody else to talk about the 21st. I'm not involved. So before we get going tonight, I just-- and this is a request that comes up periodically is to find out who's actually on the stage tonight. And so what I'm going to do is ask the Finance Committee, which sits to my left, and the Board of Selectmen, which sits to my right, to just briefly say their name and say hello to everybody.
Kevin Sullivan, Chairman.
Patrick Powers.
Erin Barr.
Mike Dugan.
Michelle Worden.
Good evening. Matt Dyer.
Kenny Mitchell.
Laura Kemet.
Jim Hickey.
Joe Weeks.
And I'm Sean Keely. I'm the moderator, and I just want to point out that the selectmen, we're losing two of them after this election, but we'll be gaining two new selectmen or members of the select board. But I just wanted to point out, the two people we're losing are Matt Dyer and Kenny Mitchell. And both have done a tremendous service to the town. Matt is much too young to be retiring from anything, but he started working on town issues at the tender age of 18, working on the recycling committee and the energy committee. And he was elected to the Board of Selectmen in 2018 and has spent the last year as the chairman. And Kenny has been serving the Town of Hanson since 2013. He's been on different appointed boards and was elected for three terms to be a selectman. And he also served as Chair of the Board for several years during his time in office. So thank you both for your service. And I, on my left, I want to point out that Kevin Sullivan is a commander in the United States Navy, and he is being shipped off to exotic locales for the next year, starting in July. So we're going to miss him, but thank you very much for your service. And I also want to point out Bruce Young.
He just left.
He left? Oh. No, 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 no. I just want to point out, I think it's a-- he's all right, though, right? Okay, okay. I just want to point out that this, since he actually came and he spoke to the moderator, it's official, this was his 50th consecutive annual town meeting, which is just an incredible accomplishment. So even though he isn't here right now-- So, other housekeeping matters. The rules of tonight's meeting will be governed by Town Meeting Time, which is the parliamentary practice for the moderators of Massachusetts. And the first motion that I would make, as we have done for several past meetings, is to-- I make a motion that the town meeting allow me to determine the quantum of the vote. Thank you. And just by way of explanation, some of the motions require either a nine-tenths or a two-thirds majority in order to be passed by state law. If we have a voice vote and I determine it to be two-thirds or nine-tenths, we can go with it. If somebody disputes it, however, and this has happened before, if you think that I haven't correctly called it, we can go to a hand count. And so I'll ask you to either hold up your yellow or blue cards. But otherwise, it just helps get some of the matters that are less controversial done quickly. So there's a motion, and it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Pardon me? Oh, yes, that's what I'm forgetting. Thank you very much, Ms.-- So if you would like to jot down how much money we have available, here it goes. The available funds as of March 31st, 2022, in free cash, we have $1,736,083. In our stabilization fund, we have $1,365,603. In school stabilization, we have $187,225. Under water surplus, we have $1,040,002. The recreation retained earnings fund has $949 in it, and the solid waste retained earnings fund has $25,058.
Mr. Moderator, the school stabilization--
One more time.
Sure. The school stabilization fund has $1,000--
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. School stabilization has $187,225. They'd love it to start with a million, wouldn't they, but-- Yeah, thank you for the correction. All righty, very good. So I adjourn the annual town meeting and call the special town meeting to session. So once again, we're working on the special town meeting motions. Article 1, I move the town vote to transfer $13,842.03 from free cash to pay unpaid bills from prior fiscal year from the prior fiscal year as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded, these funds are needed to pay bills, and this requires a nine-tenths vote. So any questions or comments, discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required nine-tenths vote. Article 1 is adopted. Article 2, I move the town vote to transfer from line item 54 of the fiscal year 2022 operating budget, $180,000 to fund the fiscal year 2022 snow and ice deficit and to supplement the fiscal year 2022 operating budget for Camp Kiwani as printed in the informational warrant.
Seconded.
Any questions or concerns? Ms. Rain, if you could just please go to the microphone and introduce yourself. And if, you know, I know a lot of people in this room, even if you think you know me or I know you, if you could please just state your name and your address so that we have it for the record.
Ann Rain, 557 State Street. This is actually a statement from Bruce Young, who had to leave. Explanation is that the town meeting, the sum of $12,951,003 was voted in the fiscal year 2022 Whitman-Hanson Regional District Operating Assessment to the Town of Hanson. This was a deliberate overappropriation, since the school committee's actual legal assessment was $12,646,118, and legally only $12,646,118 is being paid out over to the school district in fiscal 2022, the fiscal year ending this coming June 30th. That is a fact, and despite how this article is worded, not one penny of this $180,000 is being taken from the actual school assessment or transferred to pay for either the ice and snow deficit or to support and to support recreation. This is from Bruce. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And actually, just for an explanation, because this does get a bit confused, I'm going to ask Ms. Fedoroff, our town council.
So the funds are being transferred from the school assessment that was voted on by this town meeting at the last annual town meeting. There was an excess appropriation, and if you don't appropriate that money tonight, what happens is it turns into free cash at the end of the fiscal year, once it becomes certified by the Department of Revenue. If you do appropriate, it's going from one operating budget to another operating budget within the fiscal year, which is an appropriate action taken by town meeting. It requires town meeting vote because it's going from education to townside operating budget.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 2 as printed in the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 2 is adopted. Article 3, I move the town vote to transfer $11,000 from free cash to purchase new election equipment as printed in the informational warrant.
Seconded.
The explanation, pole pads are the latest iPad technology that have been certified by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to assist both voters and election workers. It is a voter check-in and verification process that will save election costs and time, reduce employee overtime, save paper, and speed up check-in for registered voters at both town meetings and elections. Any questions or concerns?
Is that going from paper to digital?
The question is, is will we be going from paper to digital?
Yes, but it does have a printout. It does have a piece of printout.
So the answer was--
It's a ballot, just checking in.
Yeah, the answer was, since I can't force the clerk to go to a microphone--
Thank you.
The answer was, we're only going digital for checking in. This is not a digital ballot, so it's just for the convenience and for the speed for the clerk's office. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 3 is adopted. Article 4, I move to approve Article 4 as printed in the informational warrant and further to transfer $203,296 from free cash to effectuate the same. Do I have a second? Seconded. The explanation for this is the town previously approved the use of $98,000 of community preservation funds to acquire the property at-- to acquire this property at the 2019 special town meeting. In addition, the town secured a land grant in the amount of $203,296. However, this is a reimbursable grant whereby the town must first expend the funds to purchase the property and then receive reimbursement from the state. Further, this article also authorizes the taking of this property, which was not part of the 2019 warrant article. A friendly taking may be required as certain title issues have been discovered. Any questions or concerns? If you could go to the microphone, please.
Can you hear me?
My fear is the people in the back won't be able to hear you.
Hi, Gail Joyce, 276 Lakeside Road. I have a question of the street address of Zerl-McQuan Street. Where is this? It says on Lot 2, but where in relationship to McQuan Street is Zerl?
Ms. Kemet.
Yeah, this actually would be-- are you familiar with Smitty's Bog at all? It is a chunk of Smitty's Bog, which is right next to Camp Kiwani, and then going all the way out to McQuan Street. I don't know how to describe it to you without looking at an actual map, but the town owns the remainder of Smitty's Bog, which is the bog right next to Camp Kiwani, and this is the only piece we don't own.
Is that across the street also where the wetlands are?
Across the street from where, ma'am?
On McQuan Street.
I'm not sure where you're referring to, so a portion of this is wetland, but a great deal of it is not.
Is it by Pine Grove? That's what I want to know.
No, no, ma'am.
No, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 4 is adoptable. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed something. This was supposed to be done by a two-thirds vote, so if you'll just indulge me. All those in favor of Article 4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required two-thirds vote. Article 5, I move to approve Article 5 as printed in the informational warrant, and if said property is not--
If we see if we need to get--
Okay. Article 5, I move to approve Article 5 as printed in the informational warrant, and if said property is not conveyed pursuant to Article 4 of the special town meeting warrant for May 2nd, 2022, prior to July 1st, 2022, that said sum of $203,296 from Article 4 shall be transferred to be used after July 1st, 2022, to effectuate the land transaction contemplated hereunder, which is the same as in Article 4. Wow. That's something. I'm a lawyer, and that confuses me. Well, anyways, do you want to explain this?
Sure.
Ms. Fedoroff.
I didn't realize I had this microphone. Should I use this?
Yeah, go right there. Well, if you could stand.
No?
No.
Roger.
All right, here we go. Okay, so the land grant in question that the town was able to obtain for the $203-some-odd thousand expires at the end of this fiscal year. And we had been working since 2009 to rectify some of the title issues, and the title issues being when you have a deed and you record it, all of that gets recorded in what's called the chain of title. And when there's a gap, there's a problem to convey it. So if we're unable to either rectify those title issues or effectuate the taking that you just authorized pursuant to Article 4, by June 30th, we'll have to get a second land grant to purchase the property, because, again, that $203,000 expires. Now, it would not be a new appropriation, because we'll just take the same money that you just appropriated in Article 4 and apply it to Article 5, and that's only if we get a new land grant. So no additional money, but it just allows us to engage in some legal processes that we may need have to-- we may have to do.
Any questions or concerns? And this, again, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 5 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by the required two-thirds vote. Article 5 is adopted. Article 6, I move the town vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaws, Article 2-12, classification and compensation, by deleting Sections 11A through 11E in its entirety and inserting the new Sections 11A through 11E as printed in the informational warrant.
Seconded.
Seconded. The changes to the compensation plan are in bold italicized text. The changes include adjusting the minimum range for all positions from $13.50 to $14.50 to reflect the increase in the minimum wage. The plan also contains changes to the library director, call firefighters, and call fire lieutenants on the compensation plan, the addition of a grant writer procurement administrator, which will be funded and filled at a later date pending town meeting approval, an increase of salary to conservation-- to the conservation agent to reflect full-time status, and the creation of a part-time administrative assistant position in the Board of Selectmen's office, again funded under a separate article. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor of Article 6 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 6 is adopted. Article 7, I move the town vote to transfer $40,000 from water surplus to upgrade the supervisory control and data acquisition system, better known as the SCADA. Seconded. Our current SCADA system has not been upgraded since 2015, and the current computer and software is at risk for failure and possibly potential cyber attacks. The SCADA system allows the water department operators full access, control, and monitoring of the pump station, chemical building, and water tank from the office. They can also view the status of the distribution system 24 hours a day remotely from their laptops and monitor and answer all alarms that come in on the SCADA system. Any questions or concerns? Could you please go to the microphone?
How you doing? Dan McDonough, Carrot Road. For the SCADA system, I was just wondering, is it service you're upgrading, or with the laptop, it sounds like it is internet access through the SCADA system?
Oh, I would call on the--
It's a server.
Oh, could you please-- We have the water supervisor. If you could just come to the microphone.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Yeah, people couldn't hear you. If you could please come to the microphone to give the answer. Thank you.
Yes, upgrade the whole system.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 7 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 7 is adopted. And with that, I will adjourn the special town meeting and call to order the annual There's a lot of paper involved. I still hear rustling. All right. Article 1, I move the town vote to hear reports of the various town officers committees, special committees, and act thereof.
Seconded.
Seconded. The reports voted on are those published in the 2021 town report, which you can all pick up in the lobby. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 1 is adopted. Article 2, I move the town vote to see if the town will authorize the treasurer-collector to enter into compensating balance agreements during fiscal year 2023, as permitted by Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53F.
Seconded.
Seconded. This article allows the treasurer-collector to maintain accounts using credits instead of money to pay for banking charges. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 2 is adopted. Article 3, I move the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all paid elected officials of the town as printed in the warrant.
Seconded.
Seconded. This article sets the salary limits for all elected officials. Article 5 funds the salaries, and the only one we're really voting on is the town clerk. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 3 is adopted. Article 4, I have a-- I move to pass over Article 4.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of passing over Article 4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 4 is passed over. Article 5, I move the town to vote to set the spending limits of the following revolving accounts in accordance with Hanson General Bylaw, Article 2-9, Section 3, as follows. The assessors' fund, spending limit $1,500. Parks and Fields Fund, spending limit $10,000. Library Fund, spending limit $7,000. Senior Center Programs, $2,500. Senior Center Fees, spending limit $95,000. Conservation Commission, spending limit $70,000, $7,500. Miss Daniel Thomas Mill, spending limit $1,500. And further, that the town vote to determine what sums of money the town will raise and appropriate by taxation, transfer from free cash, transfer from town ambulance funds, water department revenue, water surplus, Title V Special Revenue Fund, MWPAT loan repayment receipts reserved for appropriation, Conservation Notice of Intent Fund, overlay surplus, and fund balance reserve for reduction of future excluded debt, to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, and to provide for a reserve fund for the 2023 fiscal year as printed in the informational warrant.
Seconded.
And just by way of explanation, the first part of that motion, dealing with the bylaws, typically we vote on that separately, and unfortunately, it didn't make it into the informational-- it didn't make it into the warrant the way it should have, so we made up for it. This is something we vote every year to set the spending limits by bylaw for the various funds that we have. The rest of the motion is our typical motion to move on to the budget. And so the 2023 annual budget, you will find the spreadsheet in your materials, and what I'm going to do, there's many lines, but as we always do, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the line and pause. And if you would like to discuss that line or you have a question about it, please yell out as loudly as you can, hold. And then I'll note that we're going to come back to that line for discussion when everything else is done. If nobody holds it, then I'm just going to accept the line. The other thing that you should be looking at is there's several columns here, and the number that we are voting on tonight is the Finance Committee recommends column. So the Finance Committee spent quite a bit of time over the last seven, eight months working on these numbers. They do it in consultation with the selectmen. They do it with-- in consultation with the town accountant and the town administrator, and these are the numbers that they're putting before the meeting. If there's an adjustment or, you know, a change that's needed, then we'll do that by motion. All right, so here we go. Line 1, accepted. Line 2, accepted. Line 4, accepted. Line 5, accepted. Line 6, accepted. Line 7, accepted. Line 8, accepted. Line 9, accepted. Line 10, accepted. Line 11, accepted. Line 12, accepted. Line 13, accepted. Line 14, accepted. Line 15-- Line fifteen, accepted. Line sixteen, accepted. Line seventeen, accepted. Line eighteen, accepted. Line nineteen, accepted. Line twenty, accepted. Line twenty-one, accepted. Line twenty-two, accepted. Line twenty-three, accepted. Line twenty-four, accepted.
No.
Oh, line twenty-four, was there a hold?
No.
Okay, so we'll hold it, and we'll come back. I'll call it again at the end. So line twenty-four is held.
Twenty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Line twenty-five is...
Line twenty-four.
Lines twenty-four and twenty-five are held. Line twenty-six, accepted. Line twenty-seven, accepted. Line twenty-eight, accepted. Line twenty-nine, accepted. Line thirty, accepted. Line thirty-one, accepted. Line thirty-two, accepted. Line thirty-three, accepted. Line thirty-four, accepted. Line thirty-five, accepted. Line thirty-six, accepted. Line thirty-seven, accepted. Line thirty-eight, accepted. Line thirty-nine, accepted. Line forty, accepted. Line forty-one, accepted. Line forty-two, accepted. Line forty-three, accepted. Line forty-four, accepted. Line forty-five, accepted. Line forty-six, accepted. Line forty-seven, accepted. Line forty-eight, accepted. Line forty-nine, accepted. Line fifty, accepted. Line fifty-one, accepted. Line fifty-two, accepted. Line fifty-three, accepted. Line fifty-four, accepted. Line fifty-five, accepted. Line fifty-six, accepted. Line fifty-seven, accepted. Line fifty-eight, accepted. Line fifty-nine, accepted. Line sixty, accepted. Line sixty-one, accepted. Line sixty-two, accepted. Line sixty-three...
No.
Would you like to hold that one?
Yes.
Line sixty-three is held. Line sixty-four, accepted. Line sixty-five, accepted. Line sixty-six, accepted. Line sixty-seven, accepted. Line sixty-eight...
Oh.
Line sixty-eight is held. Line sixty-nine, accepted. Line seventy, accepted. Line seventy-one, accepted. Line seventy-two, accepted. Line seventy-three, accepted. Line seventy-four, accepted. Line seventy-five, accepted. Line seventy-six, accepted. Line seventy-seven, accepted. Line seventy-eight, accepted. Line seventy-nine, accepted. Line eighty, accepted. Line eighty-one, accepted. Line eighty-two, accepted. Line eighty-three, accepted. Line eighty-four, accepted. Line eighty-five...
Oh.
Line eighty-five is held. Line eighty-six, accepted. Line eighty-seven, accepted. Line eighty-eight, accepted. So now we'll return to those lines that were held. The first one I have held is line twenty-four, conservation commission salaries. Are there any questions or comments on that line? Could you please go to the microphone?
On the, on the funding sources, that's what I have the question on. It says sixty-five, six twenty-three taxation, and twelve thousand seven fifty wetland protection. I need further explanation on that.
Further explanation as to what?
As to the amounts that are listed there. The twelve thousand seven fifty wetland protection, is that for the ponds as well as for paying for the ponds in Hanson, especially Oldham Pond?
That, that doesn't have to do with the ponds, that funding source.
Well, it says wetlands, and...
That's the fu, the funding source at which it is, from which that amount is appropriated. I believe it's set forth in a, in a bylaw or regulation that that, it's like a receipt, that amount of receipts. My, it's a state law, that it comes from a certain apportionment of the wetlands trust. Wetlands protection funds the conservation salaries.
Funds the conservation salaries, including, and what is the taxation portion at sixty-five thousand? What is that?
That's what you, we, that's the remainder of the balance.
The remainder of what balance?
The salaries line. So the salary, the salaries line for the conservation commission is split into two funding sources. One is taxation, the other is, the other is wetlands protection.
So those two add up to that eighty-one thousand three seventy-three?
That's correct.
It doesn't?
It doesn't, then there's a...
The amended, mom, sir? Sixty-eight. So amended to sixty-eight, sixty-eight, six twenty-three, and twelve...
Well, I would like to thank you for pointing out the error in math. We are going to now have a motion from the finance committee.
I move to amend line twenty-four to, funding sources to read sixty-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-three dollars from taxation and twelve thousand seven hundred fifty from wetlands protection.
So moved. Any, any questions or concerns about that amendment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The amendment is passed. Is there any further questions or concerns about line twenty-four as amended? Seeing none. All those in favor of line twenty-four as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Line twenty-four is accepted as amended. Were there any further questions on line twenty-five? That was also held. Seeing none. All those in favor of line twenty-five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Line twenty-five is accepted. The next line that I have held is line sixty-three, which is street sweeping.
Okay. I have a question on the street sweeping. It went from sixteen thousand four fifty-seven back in 2021, and it jumped way up to forty-five thousand for the two, 2022, and then also, I mean, it's staying the same, I guess, for next year. But there's, there's fifty roads in Hanson that can't be street swept, and so how can you possibly account for that drastic change from sixteen thousand up to forty-five thousand for street sweeping?
Mr. Sullivan?
So the, the line from the FY 2021 budget was underfunded, and as I recall, we had to make some cuts that year. Street sweeping is one of the line items that took a cut. So that sixteen thousand was grossly underfunded to sweep the streets in town. We received our budget estimates, and in this case, the department had requested the forty-five thousand dollars, and we believe that to be the actual amount needed to street, to sweep the streets in town.
But they say there's only sixty, sixty main roads that are swept, which seems like an awful lot of money.
Could I call on the highway supervisor?
Thank you. Yeah?
Thank you.
Yeah, so the answer to your question in brief is that the street sweeping is now mandated twice a year instead of once a year from the MS4 Storm Water Management, mandated by the state, and that intent is to keep the street sweepings and other things from getting into the ponds and water supply. And it also accounts for disposal of the materials, instead of letting it accumulate, we dispose on it a yearly basis now.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of line sixty-three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Line sixty-three is accepted. Line sixty-eight, council on aging.
I have a question.
Oh, thank you very much. Any other questions or concerns about line sixty-eight? Seeing none. All those in favor of line sixty-eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Line sixty-eight is accepted. Line eighty-five, we have a motion to amend line eighty-five.
I move to amend the following motion to increase the salary line from five hundred and fifty thousand to eight, five hundred and fifty thousand, eight sixty to five seventy-one, four twenty-two.
I'm afraid, actually, to make everything legal, we have to have a resident of the town make the motion. So if Mr. Sullivan, please.
I move line eighty-five read five hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Seconded. If you'd like to explain...
Sure. The union contract has been ratified and represents a two percent, two percent, three percent increase for the next three years in their contract.
So this new number reflects a new contract that was just finalized. Any questions or concerns about that number or about that amendment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the amendment to line eighty-five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The new number is five hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars, and that money will come from water revenue. All those in favor of Article eighty-five as amended signify, oh, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article eighty, I'm sorry, line eighty-five is accepted. So now, we have come to an agreement on all of the lines. Are there any questions or concerns about the budget as a whole before we take a vote? Oh, Mr. Hickey?
I'll throw you to...
Could you use the microphone?
Throw you to the chairman of the finance committee, Kevin. With the mathematical mistake in twenty-four, does that change free cash?
No, it does not. It did not change the line balance. It just changed the way it was appropriated from which fund. That was the error. The, the actual number on the budget line item is correct. It's the breakdown of how it was sourced.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article five as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article five is adopted. That's a nice piece of work. Good job. Article six. We've had a few changes to the numbers in the days since the informational warrant came out, so I'm going to take a little bit of extra time with these next two articles. Article six. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sums of money to operate the recreation department during fiscal year 2023, under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and a half, as printed in the informational warrant, except, well, do I, should I not have said informational warrant? I should redo it? Ah, I knew I did something wrong. Article six. Okay. Article six. To see if the town, well, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sums of money to operate the recreation department during fiscal year 2023, under the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and a half, and as reflected by the FinCom recommendation for fiscal year 2023, is printed in the informational warrant. So you'll see in, oh, seconded. You'll see in your informational warrant, the column to the right that is headed fiscal year 2023, perenns, FinCom amended, and perenns, and those numbers are the ones that we are going to vote on tonight. Okay. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article six is adopted. Article seven. And it's the same thing? Okay. One moment. Article seven. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sums of money to operate the transfer station during fiscal year 2019, under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and a half.
Seconded.
Oh, one moment, one moment. As printed in the informational warrant, under the column headed fiscal year 23, perenns, Board of Selectmen amended, and perenns. That column is the, are the numbers that we're voting on.
Seconded.
Seconded. Thank you. Oh, shit. Yeah. No, I, I read that wrong. One more time. We're still going to be voting on the numbers under the fiscal year 2023, Board of Selectmen numbers here, that's in the informational warrant. I had the wrong year. I had the wrong year in my motion, so I'm going to have to correct that. Or else we're changing numbers for 2019, and I don't have a time machine. We can't do that. Article 7. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sums of money to operate the transfer station during fiscal year 2023 under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 F and a half, as printed in the informational warrant under the column Fiscal Year 2023, Board of Selectmen amended, in the informational warrant. Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 7, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 7 is adopted. Article 8. I move to pass over Article 8. Do we have a second? Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Yes. Mr. Malisi.
Oh, sorry. I'm looking for Article 9 or Article 10. Sorry, my fault.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions or concerns? Oh, could you go to the microphone, please?
Anne Rain. I'm just curious why would you pass this over? I wonder what the thought process was behind it. That's all.
Very good. Ms. Kebbit.
Yeah, I must admit that I had... We're talking about Article 8, right? I just wanted to make sure.
Article 8, okay.
So I had proposed this. And I think the reason that we had passed it over was the uncertainty about how much free cash there was going to be. It is going to be reimbursed by ARPA, but you have to fund it upfront to get the reimbursement. And we really weren't certain how some of these articles were going to go. And we had been cautioned by the Finance Committee, and rightly so, that we were playing Russian roulette if we decided to include this in the budget when we didn't know how the other articles were going to pass. We definitely think it's worthwhile. It isn't something that, at least I can only speak for myself, that I intend to let go further than October in request.
Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Santa Lucia.
Hi. I'm Pepper Santa Lucia, 517 West Washington Street. And I'm just comparing Articles 7 and 8. And if anyone noticed, we just used $127,000 to subsidize the transfer station. Meanwhile, in Article 6...
No. One moment.
No? Could someone explain the funding sources item part of Article 7? Because to me, it looks like that's what we're doing with free cash.
Mr. Sullivan.
So if you look at Article 7 and read down the Board of Selectmen, the FY 23 Board of Selectmen amended amount, if you start at the top, it's program receipts, $227,000, zero retained earnings, zero free cash. So the total revenue is $227,000. That's all from program receipts.
Okay. So then, when you look under funding sources for estimated expenses, so it's showing free cash down there. Was that intentional?
Yeah, that's a misprint in the warrant article, Pepper.
Okay.
It is a... There is no free cash being used on this article.
Okay. Thank you.
It must have been when it was formatted at the printers that it came out incorrectly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of passing over Article 8 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 8 is passed over. Article 9. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash $17,000 to fund promotional exams for fire department deputy chief and lieutenant positions. Seconded. Seconded. Explanation: These funds will be utilized to conduct a promotional process for the positions for deputy chief and fire lieutenant. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 9 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 9 is adopted. Article 10. I move to pass over Article 10. Do we have a second? Seconded. Mr. Malisi.
Frank Malisi, 604 Brook Street. I make a motion to move Article 10 as printed in the informational warrant. I think the citizens should have a chance to vote on whether they want a strategic plan now or in October.
Seconded.
So we have a... We have a motion to... One moment. It's already an article, right, Beth? So we don't have to... Oh, it's paperwork. Okay. Good. All right. So, Ms. Kebbit.
So I thank you, Mr. Malisi, for moving that. Originally, the board, although I think we recognize the need for a strategic plan, right, 202 years into our existence, we lacked the funding source at the time that we were going through these. But now that we're further along in this, you know, in this meeting, and it's clear that it looks as though there'll be the $15,000 to do the strategic plan, perhaps we would have a different outlook.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? All right. So we are going to vote on Article 10 as if it is an amendment to my initial motion to pass over. So all those in favor of Article 10 as printed in the informational warrant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. And since that supersedes my initial motion, Article 10 is adopted. No? All right, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you. We should get you a hat, this is parliamentarian. All right. So just to make this all legal. All those in favor of Article 10 as printed in the informational warrant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 10 is adopted. Article 11. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash $14,000 to grade private gravel roads to allow fire and law enforcement services safe access. Seconded. Seconded. The Highway Department is responsible for the grading of all private gravel roads in the town of Hanson two times per year. These funds are required for this purpose as well as to compact the material appropriately and to fill potholes with suitable material between the grading cycles as necessary for public safety and emergency access. These funds would be used to provide for the grading and to properly pitch the roads to the proper elevations and compact the material, which should help stabilize these roads. Mr. Santa Lucia.
Hi. Pepper Santa Lucia, 517 West Washington. I just... I'm sure there's a good reason for this, but I just am trying to understand why this has to be an article and not part of the Highway Department's operating budget.
Oh, can we hear from the Highway... Oh, no. It's a budgeting issue. I'm sorry. We'll hear from the town council.
So it's really just been the practice of the town to organize it as a separate article year over year over year. And these are paving private roads. So there's no legal obligation other than an ethical obligation, I suppose, to be able to get to the residents that live on those private streets in a safe and efficient manner.
Okay, thank you.
If you could, please come to the microphone.
I'm sorry, I can yell pre-lap.
All right.
I believe that it is...
Could you introduce yourself first, though?
Alicia Derrigan, Woodby-Nass, Hanson. I believe it's under the bylaws as the Highway Department has to grade 20 years of private roads, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm being told it's not in the bylaws, but I do know that this is something that we do year after year. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 11 is adopted. Article 12. I move the town to approve the capital improvement plan as printed in the informational warrant. And further, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash $299,000 to purchase a Ford F-250 pickup truck and a six-wheel Freightliner dump truck and sander as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. Seconded. And so you'll see each of those line items within Article 12, one for each piece of equipment. Would you like to just explain briefly the article? Call on the highway supervisor.
Hello, Jameson Shave, Highway Director. Yeah, so these items, the large dump truck was originally scheduled for 2019 capital plan, then pushed to 2020. And now we're into 2022. And it's about 18 months out to purchase this vehicle. It's going to be replacing a vehicle that's 18 years of age. And the same with the other truck. That's going to be about 10 years old or so by the time we get the new one. And that's on the capital plan for this year. So we've pushed them off several years, but we're getting to the point now where we're going to start losing equipment and being short for central services, snow and ice removal, and storm cleanups.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns? Oh, if you could go to the microphone.
Are they brand new?
Yes.
The equipment...
Oh, 24. Depending on where you mean, yeah, I hope we have enough.
So the exchange there was, are these pieces of equipment brand new? And the answer was perhaps 2023 model, perhaps 2024, depending on when we can get them. Supply chain issues. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 12 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 12 is adopted. Article 13. I move the town transfer from free cash $100,000 for construction of a park perimeter trail, Bay Circuit Trail relocation onto the former Plymouth County Hospital property as the necessary preliminary step for reimbursement in that same amount through a state recreational trail program grant. Seconded. The explanation: In 2019, the town successfully applied for a $100,000 Mass. Trails grant to create a recreational walking trail along the eastern edge of the former Plymouth County Hospital property. This is a reimbursement grant. Therefore, the town must first expend project funds, which will then be reimbursed by the State Department of Conservation and Recreation. This project will relocate an eight-tenths-of-a-mile portion of the Bay Circuit Trail off High Street and Pierce Avenue into scenic meadows and forested areas, incorporating renovated old service roads. It will complement future trails that are envisioned within a future town park nearby on the site. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 13 is adopted. Article 14. I move to pass over Article 14. Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of passing over Article 14 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 14 is passed over. Article 15. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash to fund capital improvements for Whitman-Hanson Regional School District as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. Seconded. Since there are eight pieces to this motion, what I'll do is I'll treat it like the budget. I'll read each line and see if anybody wants to hold it and discuss it. Line 1. Accepted. Line 2. Accepted. Line 3. Accepted. Line 4. Accepted. Line 5. Accepted. Line 6. Accepted. Line 7. Line 7 is held. Line 8. Accepted. So, Mr. Malisi.
There's hundreds of kids who play on that gym floor every year for basketball, daily sports, things like that. Experience that I have with these floors is that they don't get refinished properly, they're going to get more damage underwear under the floor itself. Plus, we can have situations where kids are getting hurt playing basketball and things like that. So I would like to amend that article to include the... I believe the original was $25,000 for the floor finish.
Ms. Kebbit.
Thank you, Mr. Malisi. Originally, again, this was one of those situations. We were in dire financial straits, and we thought of all of the capital items that were being requested from the school. This was probably the least harmful. But now that it would appear that we have the money to do that, you know, I would second your motion.
So we have a second to the motion. Yes, ma'am.
I'm not really sure if it's necessary now to add what I was going to say, but I will anyway since I'm standing here. But I'm Amy Gavin. I live on Helen Drive.
If you could just introduce yourself.
Yep, Amy Gavin, Helen Drive. I did just want to piggyback on Mr. Malisi's statement. So our daughters were playing basketball here during the winter, one of the days that they were playing in the gym. They had to stop the game because the kids kept falling. So it is harmful. And then the games moving forward were all canceled, so the kids weren't able to play basketball. So I think it is super important that we're able to repair the gym floor.
Ms. Kebbit.
Yeah, I'd just like to say we absolutely did not have that information, Ms. Galvin, so I appreciate that.
Any other questions or concerns on line 7? $25,000 was the amount. Free cash. So all those in favor of the motion to fund line 7 at $25,000 from free cash signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Line 7 is amended. Any further comment or questions on Article 15 as a whole? Okay. Yeah. Yeah. The question is, is why does it say under amount requested sometimes full $130,000? That's the full amount that the school district needs, whatever we aren't funding, presumably Whitman is, at their town meeting. That's their portion. That's their portion. The balance would be their portion. So the full amount is $130,000, remove $51,220, and that would be the Whitman portion. Any other questions?
What happens if Whitman does?
The question is, is what would happen if Whitman did not fund their portion?
It would stay as free cash.
Yeah. Since, given our agreement with Whitman, if one town does not fund their portion, then the money just doesn't get spent.
So it stays in free cash?
It stays in free cash, and it would be re-appropriated. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 15 as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Article 15 as amended is adopted. Article 16. I move the town vote to appropriate from fiscal year 2023 community preservation funds estimated annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2023, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation as follows. Appropriations from fiscal year 2023 estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses, $10,000. From reserves, from fiscal year 2023 estimated revenues for historic resource reserve, $38,000. From fiscal year 2023 estimated revenues for community housing reserve, $38,000. From fiscal year 2023 estimated revenues for open space reserve, $38,000.
Seconded.
Seconded. This article ensures that Hanson's community preservation accounts are compliant with the Community Preservation Act, which requires that a certain portion of the CPA funds be set aside for open space projects, community housing projects, historical projects, and recreation projects. In addition, it sets aside money for the administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee. Any questions or comments on Article 16? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 16 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Article 16 is adopted. Article 17. I move the town vote to transfer $28,500 from Community Preservation Fund undesignated fund balance to fund the replacement of the fence at the Botary Baseball Field Complex that separates the Little League field area from the Highway Department complex.
Seconded.
Seconded. This funding is to replace an aging and deteriorating fence that separates the baseball fields from the Highway Department complex. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Article 17 is adopted. Article 18. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $22,824 to fund an outreach coordinator for seniors position at the Council on Aging.
Seconded.
Seconded. The Hanson population continues to age, with close to 30% of the population over the age of 55. The need for services to the aging and elderly continues to increase. To ensure that people are aware of and have access to the services they need to successfully age in their homes, we request funding this position. The outreach worker will meet with residents and assist them with referrals, home care, fuel assistance, and a supplemental nutrition assistance program. He or she will be expected to become S-H-I-N-E certified, which will assist the director in advising residents of their Medicare options. This is a 19-hour, no-benefits position.
I'm sorry, Mark. Excuse me if I could just say a couple--
Yeah, please. Mr. Hickey.
Thank you. As part of the explanation, some of the numbers are wrong. I have the updated numbers from Beth Sloan, the town clerk, and it's not 30% of age 55, it's 41%. And if we bring the numbers up further, it's 33% of the residents in town are 60 and older, and 13% are 70 and older. So this position for the senior center is very important. In full transparency, you may not know, but as selectmen, we take on other committees. And I'm the liaison for the senior center, so I'm usually down there two or three days a week, you know, for different reasons. And I can see that it's getting busier, and I can see that when it's mentioned in here, and if Mary wants to add to it, but the SHINE program for Medicare, Mary will spend an hour with one individual. So if she does that just eight times a day, you know, that's eight hours. And I know that last year she spoke with 100 individuals. That's why I think this position is so important. I could talk about how I think it ties in with the transfer station in the school, but I'm going to leave that for another time. Or if you actually want to see what I said, you could go to last week's meeting. But this position at the senior center is absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As many of you will note, on this article as well as the next article, the FinCom does not recommend adding positions to this budget. We started out almost $1 million, with a $1 million deficit going into this fiscal year, a deficit which will only presumably grow next year. Right now, we're using about $250,000 to $250,000 worth of free cash to support an operational budget. It's not the way to run a town. We do not have the money for additional positions. I understand these are all worthwhile, but I will say now that the FinCom across the board did not recommend adding any hours to any positions or any additional positions due to this large deficit. So I would expect at least a $1.1 to $1.2 million deficit next year that we have to overcome. Our policy has always been that we do not like to hire people with the intent of having to get rid of them the next year. So I would caution everyone, I understand these are worthwhile positions, they're all worthwhile positions, but I will caution you that we do not have the money to add any other positions to this budget right now.
If we could hear from the Council on Aging.
Hi, Mary Collins, the Director of Elder Affairs. As I had stated when we met earlier in the week to Mr. Sullivan, I do understand the need for the Finance Committee to be very cautious in their budgeting. However, I wish this had been discussed at the beginning of tonight, excuse me, as I see the residents voting on issues and certain amounts of money without any question of whether or not there are other needs that might need to be met. I will tell you in reference to Mr. Hickey, during open enrollment during Medicare, I saw over 100 clients, those are people 60, 65 and older, who need assistance in making decisions about their Medicare options. They're not calling Jimmy J.J. Walker on the television to get his opinion. They're getting unbiased opinions. Overall, the residents in Hanson were saved over $33,000 in that very small period of time between October 13th and December 7th. $33,000 for our seniors. I'm asking this because I am in dire need of someone to help me identify and reach out to the folks within the community who are either unable or at this point unwilling to come out. There are services that are available to people to help them remain in their homes successfully as they age. Many people are unaware of those services. If I don't have someone to help with that outreach, the outreach relies solely on me. This is a need that is going unmet. Thank you.
Let me go to Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. Joseph O'Sullivan, 625 West Washington Street. I speak rigorously in favor of this. My wife is a nurse. My elderly aunt came to live with us after she was diagnosed with cancer, spent two and a half years with us until she finally passed away. We depended on the SHINE program to get her what she needs. Even though my wife is an educated professional, nobody knows you need to have a specialist that's available for you to do that. I hope none of you need to visit there, but I'm one of the 40% over 70, and I think we need this in town. We have the money now, spend it now. Service of people.
My name is Judy Caldis. I live at 87 Waltham Street, and I am the outreach worker, social service coordinator, and SHINE counselor at the Marshfield Council on Aging. I am a full-time position. I also have a part-time assistant that works 17 hours a week. This SHINE, for those who don't know, means serving health information needs of everyone on Medicare. We do have people who call Jimmy Walker's line, and they get taken to the bank. So I'm imploring that, please, on Mary's behalf, I don't know how she could do this. I saw over 300 people in that seven weeks of open enrollment. I had four other SHINE counselors working with me that saw another 300 people. To do the outreach, it's the gateway to helping not only seniors, but also younger people who need fuel assistance, who need help with food stamps, who are disabled and don't know where to go for housing. It's a needed service in the town, and I really beg people to think about this before voting. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could just be brief.
I'll be brief. Tim White, 413 Brookbend Road. I'm the Veterans Agent for the Town of Hanson. I'd like to add that Mary's position is critical in the communication about SHINE and Medicare. She's in a position to refer veterans and surviving spouses to me for veteran benefits, for those veterans that are in financial need. And typically, it comes from the SHINE coordinator as they're going through people's Medicare insurance and trying to understand the cost. So I'm going to advocate, and I would back up Mary on this. Thank you.
All right. If we could just have one more comment. Yes, sir.
Lance Benjimino, 825 Indian Head Street. We're talking about $21,736. That's at the top end of the scale of 19 hours times 22 for a 52-week year, which I believe your fiscal year is 52 weeks this year. So we're talking about $21,736. If you look down at the next article, you're talking about a 0.75% meals tax. What's that equate in the year for that meal tax if that passes? Can somebody answer that question?
Well, I think--
That'd be about 60 grand, sir.
And Mr. Hickey--
What do we need?
Mr. Hickey, you weren't recognized.
All right.
I'd really like to come to a vote, so--
Janine Foster on Holly Ridge Drive. I have been a resident of Hanson for 46 years. I highly recommend that we fund this second position to help Mary Collins out. She cannot do this all by herself, okay? It's not that much money. If we can put in a basketball floor, we can help the senior citizens.
All right. Very good. We have a motion to move to a vote, so all those in favor of Article 18 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 18 is adopted. And one of the things I've been meaning to do all night is to recognize Representative Josh Cutler, who is over here on the side. Welcome. He's been hanging in even though, you know, it's not his town meeting, so my goodness, how do you do it? So Article 19. I move to pass over Article 19.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Oh, Mr. Clemmons.
Phil Clemmons, 46 Main Street. I chair the Conservation Commission. I don't oppose the idea of passing over this, but just to want to take the opportunity to point out, as it says in the explanation here, this is the only department here that's part-time. It used to be a full-time position until the big recession hit about 10 or 12 years ago. All the other departments seem to have been able to recover from that. We have not. We've been hopping along, as I said to the Selectmen, we've been hopping on one leg for the last decade. And it's a shame when people come to the office or call the phone and can't get answers because the agent is out of hours for the week. And it doesn't simply support the environmental landscape of the town, it actually is going to be supporting the economic development of the town, because every development for businesses, industries, so on and so forth, has to come before the commission. And we look forward someday, not tonight perhaps, but in the near future, to revisiting this so that we can fully support those activities for the Town of Hanson.
Thank you. Mr. O'Sullivan.
Thank you. Joseph O'Sullivan, 625 West Washington Street. I oppose passing over this. I'm in a butter to a project that's under development in this town right now called Zero County Road. It's a developer who wants to put in 10 four-bedroom homes in a wetland surrounded on three sides by water. There is one little access path. God bless, I support every single commission in this town, but only the Conservation Commission has the authority to evaluate and use their judgment about the future impact of putting this proposed subdivision in. It would require building up the land for 10 houses between four and seven feet high. There is a clay layer down 29 inches under this. It's a perched water table for the whole area. The water has no place to go. Only the conservation agent can actually deal with the decisions and deal with the state on reviewing the wetlands ad. They're going to take 1,800 truckloads of soil to do this if it passes the Conservation Commission. So I would support moving this now and not over--
Well, do you have a motion?
I move to vote it as presented.
Seconded. Ms. Kement?
Yep. Again, this was a situation where we have to make tough decisions with a tight budget, and we were not sure in particular how the transfer station article was going to go. And the issue with this was that we're not just looking at salary, we're looking at benefits too. And so we were trying to really hold the line and be respectful of what the Finance Committee, who are appointed to make those recommendations, were saying. This certainly is not a case of us not thinking that conservation is important to the person on this board. Everybody recognizes how important that role is. There had been some discussion that we could modify and simply add a few extra hours, but I don't even know at this point if we wanted to, what the dollar amount would be through you, Mr. Keely, to Mr. Clemmons or to the FinCom. I don't even know what dollar amount we're looking at here.
Mr. Clemmons.
It is my hope, and I think the Commission's hope, that we would revisit this at the October town meeting. But in the meantime, there is one possible other fund accessible to us that could legally provide some funding for a few more hours without touching free cash or the tax rate at this point in time. But that would be a short-term stock cap thing, but we will be looking at that. So we do desire to have more hours, but we also need it to be done in a sustainable way. So we share all the concerns that have been mentioned, and we still have this goal, but we're trying to work with the realities we have right now, and there may be some things we can do before October as well as in October.
All right. So we have a motion to actually consider Article 19 as printed in the informational warrant. So I will take a vote on that, and then we can proceed to a final vote. Oh, that's true. Yeah, so actually, Mr. O'Sullivan, I'm going to rule your motion out of order because there's no dollar amount or funding source. So that motion being overruled leaves us with the original motion that was seconded, which is to pass over Article 19. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of passing over Article 19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Article 19 is passed over. Article 20. I move the town vote to accept Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 64-L, Section 2A, to impose a meals tax at the rate of 0.75% to take effect October 1st, 2022.
Seconded.
Seconded. Explanation: Adoption of the statute would impose a 0.75% local option meals excise tax of the vendor's gross receipts from the restaurant meal sales. This local meals tax will not create any additional financial or workload burden upon the establishment. This measure will generate additional revenue for the town that will be used to fund future municipal and school costs as determined by subsequent town meeting votes. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 20 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Article 20 is adopted. Article 21. I move the town vote to amend the Town of Hanson bylaws to add a new Article 2-21 to require all elected and appointed boards to video or audio record their meetings as printed in the informational warrant.
Seconded.
Seconded. Explanation: In order to increase transparency and citizen engagement, the Town of Hanson should make the video of all meetings available to the general public. There are nuances and discussions that happen in meetings that are not necessarily captured in the minutes for the meetings. Although we currently have a policy that requires Board of Selectmen-appointed boards to videotape their meetings, several of our appointed boards do not comply. In addition, many of the elected boards do not comply. This article would improve the transparency of all elected and appointed Hanson boards and committees. Any questions or concerns? Oh, Ms. Santa Lucia.
Hi, Teresa Santa Lucia--
Hi, Teresa Santa Lucia, 517 West Washington Street. I don't object at all to having the various meetings recorded. One question I have, though, I've asked previously, I serve on a bunch of different committees, and there's no policy in place as to how these videos are being treated, how we get the AV equipment, how long they're being held, who's responsible for them, you know, how long they're going to be available. So I think in terms of transparency, while most of the volunteer commissions and committees are willing to videotape, I think that there also needs to be a policy in place as to how this information is protected, categorized, kept, et cetera, and also that the actual video equipment is available. I've been told do it on your cellphone, which I'm not comfortable with. So I'd request that also a policy be provided. Thank you.
Ms. Diaz.
Hi, Aline Diaz, 48 Brig Street in Hanson. And I had two things to say. It's Whitman Hanson Community Access. It's improperly printed. And actually, Whitman Hanson Community Access would provide the equipment and will maintain the records we have for 20 years now. So I don't know if that helps her with that question.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Ellis, if you could come to the microphone, please.
Don Ellis, 164 Indian Head Street. Does this include some committees?
Ms. Kement?
Yes, it would include all committees, that we, all boards, all elected, all appointed, so that there's full transparency. And if a person wants to know what was discussed at a meeting, they're not left to use a decoder ring and read minutes. They can actually listen to what... So it doesn't have to be video, because we've heard some people say, you know, "I don't have the ability," or "that's really difficult," or "I don't," you know, "the learning curve," or whatever. And so there's also, Whitman Community Access has recording devices. And Mrs. Santa Lucia, I agree, we do need to have a policy so that there's consistency. And I would strongly object to people using their personal phones. That brings up a host of privacy issues that I don't think any of us want to get into, or at least I don't want to get into. So I don't know if that answered your question, Mr. Ellis.
I just want to clarify that. So it's just recording, not video?
We would prefer video, but we are saying video or recording.
Okay, so it's not mandatory. You can choose one or the other.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Campbell.
Joe Campbell, 150 Woodbine Ave. I'm also the chairman of the planning board. I would support this a lot more if, to what Mrs. Santa Lucia had stated, if there was a little bit more regulation regards to how the policy is going to be developed. So I think that all the boards need to have input, and I would like to see that in some form amended inside this article to show that it's not just going to be a dictation, because somebody that doesn't know anything about media, they're going to go and throw policies out there that perhaps are antiquated or outdated. So I think that for all elected boards and committees, if there was a small conglomerate that could come together with folks at town hall to make sure that the policy is developed and moved forward, I'd support that 100%.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 21 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The chair is in doubt. So for the first time, we're going to call on our tellers. And what color are we holding up? We're holding up yellow. So all those in favor of Article 21 signify by raising your yellow card at this time, and keep it up until the tellers get a chance to count it. Thirty-five. You had 35 as well? Sixty-seven. All those opposed to Article 21, please signify by raising your yellow card at this time. Yellow card. Pass.
Eight.
Eight.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. You did the math all right?
Yeah, you did the math. It was 1.775.
I'm double checking.
I don't believe you know.
So I have 137 to 55. Was that what you had, Mr. Hickey? I think it was. So it sounded a lot closer than it actually turned out to be. So by a vote of 137 in favor and 55 opposed, Article 21 is adopted. Article 22. I move the town vote to amend the general and zoning bylaws of the Town of Hanson with gender-neutral wording, specifically deleting the words "Board of Selectmen" and inserting in its place the word "Select Board" wherever those words appear.
Second.
Second it. "Select Board" is a term that simply and fully represents the people in the world we live in today, that embraces diverse diversity and inclusion. We believe this change is important because our government works better when all people, regardless of gender, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, are included and feel welcome to participate in public service and government, and this requires a 2/3 majority vote. Any questions or concerns about Article 22? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 22 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The aye... I believe the ayes have it by the required 2/3 majority. Somebody requests a count, therefore we will go to a count. All those in favor of Article 22 signify by holding up the yellow card. Thirty-two. Thirty-three. Seventy-six. All those opposed to Article 22, please signify now by raising your yellow card. Five. Seventeen. Eighteen.
141 to 40.
I'm double checking now. I have 141 to 30. Didn't carry the damn one. So by a vote of 141 to 40, Article 22 has the required 2/3 majority and is adopted. Article 23. I move the town vote to reduce the number of members of the Recreation Commission from seven members to five members.
Second.
Second it. It's difficult to achieve a quorum with a seven-member commission and therefore unable to conduct meetings and attend to matters. Lowering the commission membership to five will allow the Recreation Commission to attain a quorum to successfully conduct meetings and attend to matters. Any questions or concerns? Thank you for pointing that out. Article 23 is printed in the informational warrant has two explanations. The second explanation is not under the correct article. So it's just the first explanation that you need. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, one moment, one moment. Yes, sir.
John Zuko, Glin, Placing Hanson, former Recreation Commission member. What is now the quorum with the five-member board?
I'm told that that would be three.
Three, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article 23 is adopted. Article 24. I move to pass over Article 24.
Second.
Second it. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of passing over Article 24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? The ayes have it. Article 24 is passed over. All right, now look. This is the part of the town meeting I've been dreading for a while. And I'll tell you why. It's not because of the marijuana debate itself. I think, you know, that's been argued over and over again. It's just that amending these bylaws is a very complicated thing. And so I've been trying to work with the town council for the last several weeks so that we can make this go as smoothly as possible. The problem is, is that each article depends on the article before it. And so I just ask you to bear with me, because there's going to be, I have to change the motions according to what happened just in the previous articles, okay? So, here we go.
Until that...
Yes, yeah. There was a handout at the beginning of, out in front there, that says marijuana zoning articles handout. Please refer to this. The motions are going to refer to specific pages within this handout. We put this together to try, in any way possible, to make this a little easier. I hope it works. Anyways, get the handout out and take a look. So Article 25. I move the town vote to amend Section 6 of the Town of Hanson zoning bylaws by deleting both subsection L, medical marijuana facilities, and subsection M, marijuana establishments in their current forms, combining the two subsections and updating the language accordingly as printed in the marijuana zoning articles handout on pages three through seven. Second it. This article simply reworks, simply works to recodify the existing language for both medical and recreational marijuana by combining them into a single section and eliminating superfluous or unnecessary language or requirements. At the state level, review has also been centralized, falling now under the Cannabis Control Commission. Moreover, the impacts of marijuana establishments and medical marijuana treatment centers for cultivation, manufacturer, and other use types is the same. This requires a 2/3 majority vote, as will all of these related bylaw changes. But I'll bring that up each time. Any questions or concerns about Article 25? Yes, sir.
Kevin Cohen, 493 Spring Street. I just had a question, because at first, I didn't have any concern about this one, because it's just, after all, just changing the language. But after looking at it closer, I was looking at, you know, according to Maura Healy, that medical cannot be barred from a town. So if it can't be barred from a town, and we've, you know, this is of course pending the outcome of Article 26. I almost wish Article 26 was first, so that we could figure this out. But anyway, if medical can't be barred from a town, then potentially, somebody could come in and do medical and potentially switch that to retail if retail doesn't pass tonight.
Ms. Federoff.
No. So even though oversight of both medical and recreational or adult-use marijuana falls under the CCC, they're still separate entities. So retailer can't convert, or opposite, medical marijuana treatment facility cannot convert to a marijuana retailer. It would require, number one, entirely different thing. You would need an HCA from this board to be approved, and you would need approval in the zoning bylaw, which is something separate. That's the next article that we'll be dealing with. So by right, it's not allowed to be converted. So all this really does is, because if you're growing marijuana and it's for recreational or medical, it still smells the same, it still has those same kinds of impacts. The different impacts are really felt in the retail versus the treatment center that's selling to patients. So that's the only distinction in terms of impacts, but it's essentially just combining the two. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Dan McDonough again, Carriage Road. I guess I just have a comment. This is, what, the fourth or fifth time we've been voting on this? It seems to me that every time it goes to the citizens, we vote no, we want less marijuana, and it goes to the board, and you guys vote your name in a sleep. That is the difference between us, just putting that out. I do appreciate the work that you're doing, and I understand it's difficult. So just reading through this. To me, with Article 26, 27, 28, 29, they're all chipping away. They're all looking for a chink in the armor, from what I can tell, to get marijuana in this town. We had cranberry bogs, that was a pride of Hanson. Now we want marijuana, right? So very off the bat, let's see, Article 25, page three here, this is going to be crossed out, and other places where children congregate. We're going to remove that now. So for me, who has a lot of dead friends from all this, any money we save that go to taxes, we're going to pay for down the road in 20 years for rehab. That's my opinion of it. What else we got here? So I think this is still 25. This is page five. We're going to cross out no medical marijuana facility, gross area more than 2,500 square feet, nexus of 20,000 square feet, which means it's going to be big. There, then, let's see. Page seven, the annual reporting. What's going to be crossed out and appear before the special granting authorities? So that means they don't have to show up, they just have to put in their permit before they, you know, look for appeals down the road. What else we got? Page nine, to provide operation except marijuana retailers. So you're removing the language in Section A.
Yeah, if we could just stick to Article 25, please.
All right, sorry. Well, I'll save my time. But again, page 13, marijuana retailers prohibited. So as a father, this is very concerning to me. I understand, you know, if adults are going to do, do what you want to do. When you start talking about children and you start making this the major industry in this town, eventually you're going to switch from people who do it recreationally, and you're going to have promoting, you're going to have marketing. And what is a businessperson, where you're going to market? You're going to market as close as possible to your retailer to save their own gas. So I don't want it anywhere near kids. I don't like it in the town. But, you know, that's my opinion, and I'll speak to that.
Yeah, Mr. Hickey.
Jim Hickey, Palladium Ave. I believe this is only the second time marijuana has come up at town meeting. And, sir, I didn't catch your name, but you need to be careful how you generalize this table. I have been a proponent since the beginning on retail marijuana. I don't want it in the town, but you can't group us together. If you're going to say stuff, you want to make sure you're right before you say it.
One moment. Yeah, all the debate has to go, all debate has to go through me so that we can keep this orderly. Thank you. I just want to have Ms. Federoff address the concerns.
So I want to be crystal clear here, because my job is only to make things clear. I don't care one way or the other how you vote. It's up to you. But what we tried to do, the original recreational, so... Um, but what we tried to do, um, the original recreational, so adult-use marijuana, not medical, was crafted based on the medical marijuana treatment center bylaw, it was put into a different bylaw, okay? And so what we did was we combined them, and where they were exactly the same, um, we just combined them. And then I wanted everyone to understand what they were voting on, and that's where we have the substantive changes, where you see the crossouts, and the additions are the underlines. So, so that's the reason we wrote it that way. If we did a red line in both, it would be an entire red line, and you wouldn't see what the substantive changes were. Um, and exactly that, so other places where children commonly congregate, when the medical marijuana legislation was originally passed, so now we're talking five, six years ago, I don't even know at this point, um, that's the language of the legislation. Recreational marijuana was passed two years later, and, um, they did not have that language because there was some, I guess, uh, too much flexibility for the legislature, they felt it was too flexible a standard, so they made the standard 500 feet, schools K through 12. Um, so when medical got folded into, um, under the CCC, they modified their language, and it all became fairly uniform. And again, 25 does not add any additional uses, so it doesn't add retail, that comes later, and you decide that later. This just clarifies what the existing language is and eliminates some of the superfluous stuff.
Yes, sir.
Bob Houston, 669 West Washington Street. You know, all of these articles relating to marijuana, okay, all relate to your blue handout, okay, your map, okay? These are areas, okay, in town, okay, according to what it says on it, the proposed marijuana retail area overlay district plan. Now, the first one, okay, is an overlay of Route 27, okay, down by the, uh...
Sir, just a point of clarification, that is for a later article, just the article that relates to retail sales.
Right. But if we're talking retail sales, okay, and these are the areas you're proposing...
Right, but...
You know, what you're doing, okay, if you don't mind me interrupting you, okay, is you're taking out, okay, in Article 25, okay, the restrictions on the placement, okay, in school zones, in church zones, okay, and other places where youth congregate. Now, I've been a resident, okay, of the Town of Hanson for 48 years, okay? I'm not proud of the fact, okay, that my son started marijuana, okay, as a recreational jud, uh, drug, okay, and has gone into, you know, other drugs of choice, all right? I'm not proud of that. But, okay, if we give opportunity, okay, to basically raise money, and that's what I'm healing, hearing, when I've gone, okay, to the meetings, okay, at the town hall, that the whole issue is to raise money, okay? Our issue is to protect our families and our children, okay? And if we forget to do that, okay, then we, no matter what drug we sell, okay, is it going to enhance the community, it's going to destroy the community. And that's all we want to say.
All right. Just to clarify, you know, I've been trying to avoid, this has been part of the agenda that I've been having about these articles, is that I, I want to avoid arguing all of them at once and not being absolutely clear as to what we're voting on. So with that in mind, Ms. Federoff.
So, again, to be clear, if you look on page five of your handout, and again, we're dealing with Article 25. So if you deal with Article 5, what that does is it specifies, it says marijuana retailers shall be prohibited in the Town of Hanson. So that stays the same, nothing's changing. Medical marijuana facilities and marijuana establishments expressly excluding retailers may be allowed by special permit in the following areas. That's where they're allowed now. So map 59 lots, and it goes on, I'm not going to read them all, map 52 lot, and map 24, right? So it's not along that 27 corridor, this is where your facilities are allowed now, and I believe all of those lots within those various maps are in the industrial zone, correct, Joe? Is that right?
Except for retail.
Except for where?
No retail.
No, right, at this article, again, no retail here, okay? So that stays the same, marijuana retailer shall be prohibited, and these lots are all the same, they're listed in your existing bylaw today, as of May 2nd, 2023. Uh, two. Marty jumping ahead, that's how much I want to get out of here.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Kathleen Nie, Pleasant Street. Um, first of all, map 24 lot 70 is the lot of land that Town, Town of Hanson purchased in 2018 to become the DPW on Hawks Ave, over near the barge. That's not part of the industrial plan originally. Uh, secondly, to omit language that says other places children congregate, I feel that that opens up the opportunity for other areas in town where an establishment could absolutely be built, constructed, or changed. Uh, I think we need to protect our children, and we really need to look very, very closely and sternly at any area that we decide to bring an establishment into our town. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Peter Travellini, 334 Pleasant Street, um, retired teacher. And it really upsets me that you would take out the language at other places where children congregate. What is that all about? I mean, we should, we owe it to the children that whatever we do will enhance their lives, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, that their lives will be better because of the decisions we have made. And a decision to, why would you cross out that language? I mean, who can answer that question for me? If you're going to put it someplace, all right, don't put it down by the barge, the largest open space of recreational land in the Town of Hanson, by the way. Why put that adjacent to that when you've got the industrial park, which is where it belongs anywhere? I'm, I'm opposed to it, and I say, if you're not going to help the kids, then...
Well, short of the gesture, you had asked if somebody could explain it, and, and I'm going to just, you know, take my stab at it. Ms. Federoff has already tried to do that. There isn't one marijuana law that's passed in the last 10 years in the state, there's been four. And so some of them have been done by referendum, some of them have been done by the legislature, some of them have been done by the referendum and then by the legislature. And so the language has evolved quite a bit over the last 10, 15 years. And the most recent iteration of the marijuana laws takes away that where children congregate language, and therefore, what, what the town is proposing here is to make the bylaws comply with the latest state legislation. Again, I don't have, I don't have, uh, an opinion as to how this is going to go, and like every other article, I'm not going to vote on it. But, uh, that's the explanation. Yes, sir. Oh, Mr. Malisi.
So I just want to make it clear, Article 25 is taking the current bylaw and modifying it to say the exact same thing without all the others. This does not include ma, retail marijuana, this, Article 25 does not include retail marijuana. Article 26 is where the retail marijuana comes into play and would amend Article 25 if Article 26 is passed. And I just want to reiterate, because there's a lot of misinformation going around there. We are not trying to put retail marijuana on Hawks Ave. That is not what we are trying to do. That, that information that's been spreading around here is, is a misconception. We, they're, and I'm, I'm kind of going out of order here, but there was, there was interest in leasing that property for a cultivation facility for that town, for, for the town, like the one that we have in the industrial park. And there's other ramifications of having things on Hawks Ave, like a DPW and all that road salt going into the conservation land behind there that nobody thought about. And the fact that we spent $350,000 on a study to see if you can even go there, when it takes two cents to realize that when you have road salt going into a conservation area, what are you going to do in the back of that?
Mr. Malisi, if we could, if, please, if we could keep the arguments on Article 25 only.
Moderator, move the vote.
I'd really like to move the vote. If only people could, could, if you have something new, we could sit here all night and talk about marijuana. But do we have an agreement to move the vote?
I second it.
Second it.
I, I have to say that this should have been passed over tonight, because this information was not handed out to us until we got here tonight. I went to the town hall to find this information on, on the marijuana zoning, and all the other information was laid out, along with the maps and everything else that you handed out tonight. It's not enough time to read over and look over, and I think this should be passed over.
All right. Mr. Campbell, you have something new.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Moderator. To everybody here at town hall, if you look at Article 25, it's actually a system of planning board and reconifying, clarifying the language that's currently existing. It's language, it's words on paper, that's all it is. And to the point about not having information, the planning board has had a plethora of public meetings. We have had a plethora of meetings ourselves where we have this on the agenda. This first article is language in our bylaw. We need to clean it up and clarify it and recodify it. It's language and words. That's where council's coming in to ask for clarification. It doesn't do anything other than clarify the language of our bylaws.
Very briefly, sir.
Very, very briefly. Uh, he said it's only words, and I'll tell you, so is the Constitution, so is the Declaration of Independence, knock off that, it's only words. They are critical because each word has meaning, which your English teacher should have told you.
It's, all laws, words on paper, it's an existential question that I would love to get into, but it's, it's like 10 o'clock. So, um, all those in, well, the motion is to, is for Article 25. All those in favor of Article 25 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, the chair is in doubt. If you could please hold aloft your yellow card, all those in favor signify by holding up your yellow card. This is going to pass. And once again, this has to be a two-thirds vote.
28.
28.
29.
29. 87. All those opposed Article 25, please signify by holding up your yellow card now.
14.
14.
22.
22. Damn it all. I had my calculator up. So by a vote of 144 to 67, Article 25 passes by the required two-thirds majority vote. Article 25 is adopted. All right. All right. And 10, okay. Article 26. I move the town vote to amend Section 6 of the Town of Hanson zoning bylaws by allowing for marijuana retailers, retail sale of adult-use marijuana to consumers by special permit in the same locations as is allowed for other marijuana establishments as printed in the separate handout on pages nine through 10. We have a second. This also requires a two-thirds majority vote. Mr. Malisi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. So I brought these citizens' petitions back, um, from town meeting and special, uh, special town meeting in October. Just want everybody to know, my name is Frank Malisi, I live at 604 Brook Street, I have three young kids in this town, all of them are over there at the cafeteria right now playing with other kids in this town. Two reasons I brought this article. Number one, marijuana is already here in Massachusetts. It's already here. This, and last year in Massachusetts alone, they brought in more revenue from retail marijuana than they did the liquor, the liquor excise taxes here in the state of Massachusetts. And I, with all due respect of people disagreeing and saying that, it's going to be having impacts on the kids here, I don't see anybody outside protesting any of the liquor stores that are in this town. I'll tell you one thing, from somebody with personal experience, liquor is a lot more destructive than marijuana will ever be, will ever be in my experience. You have people driving drunk around town, there's nothing stopping me from going down to the liquor store, buying a handle of Tito's and driving drunk on the roads. There's nothing stopping me from doing that. And we have no problem taking that excise tax money from the liquor stores. So, so, so what is this, a double-edged sword here? We have no problem doing it because it was back in prohibition in the 20s? Retail marijuana is already here in Hanson. There's two things we need in this town that we've been talking about the last three years: overrides, deficits, and revenue. This is a taxing fund source that is not on the backs of the taxpayers of this town. This is not going to take extra, extra residential ink, or, or, I'm sorry, uh, uh, real estate tax, and it's going to take and supplement that because you won't need, you won't need to pay that money that we come in. The state of Massachusetts allows you to have a 3% tax option on top of any retail marijuana shop or establishment in a town. And the Board of Selectmen have a complete control on who can come in here and do a retail marijuana business. We also approved back in 2018, the first vote, by the way, for retail marijuana, or any marijuana in this town, was in 2018, not three or four of them before that, that we can grow marijuana here in the Town of Hanson. So we have no problem growing it and collecting the tax revenue from that, shipping it off to other towns, but we don't have a problem having, consenting adults buy it here in the, in the Town of Hanson, when they have to go up to Rockland, buy it from Rockland, have a, have a bigger chance of doing it there and then driving back into Hanson. I mean, like, come on, this is 2022, this was not 2018, this has been studied now for the past five years in Massachusetts, and there hasn't been any ill effects that, to my knowledge, I've done a lot of research, because I care about the kids in my town. I care about my three kids because we, they're going to grow up here and until they're adults, and hopefully they'll live here after this. So I have every reason to not bring this in front of the town if I thought it was a bad idea for my kids, but it's not. Because a bad idea for my kids is not having a fully funded school, a bad idea for my kids is not having a fully funded recreation department. A bad idea for my kids is having to, to fight for $25,000 for parks and fields, when we know we can use double that on our parks and fields. We had to go to CPC for a fence, when that should have been in the budget for parks and fields. Our kids deserve more in this town, not deficits, overrides, and no revenue.
All right. Quick public service announcement from the chief of police. Please don't drink a handle of Tito's and go driving through Hanson. Thank you. Before we get to your comments, and we definitely will, I just wanted Ms. Federoff to, to do a quick explanation, I should have had her do that first.
And I, and I just want to be clear, here, we're talking about marijuana retailers. So if you look at page nine, for example, see the strike-throughs, we take now what was amended and combined, and now we're in subsection L, the new subsection L, right? And we strike out marijuana retailers, which, which excluded them, and we strike out to prohibit marijuana retailers in the Town of Hanson. Now, if you go on further, go to the next page, page 10, that tells you that if you were to decide, okay, we want marijuana retailers in the town, this is where they go. It's the second paragraph here that's, um, more emboldened, and it says marijuana retailers will be allowed a special permit in these locations, I'm not going to read them to you because that would be crazy, but, um, that's when you can refer to your maps, and that's where the marijuana retailers would be located if you were to approve this article. So I just wanted everyone to understand what we're talking about here. So take a look at your blue map. So take a look at your blue map here.
Yes, ma'am.
Annette Benonato, 72 Brookside Drive. I'm asking everyone to vote no on Article 26 tonight. The residents of Hanson have already voted no three other times to the recreational marijuana retailers. Adding more drugs to our community will not add value to our community. By voting no tonight, you will be making a statement to our youth that recreational marijuana does not benefit them or our community. I have, my son telling me they're dealing marijuana in the bathrooms at school, they're dealing marijuana at Camp Kiwani. Don't tell me it is not a problem here. It is a problem and it's already happening now with the black market. Go ahead and add millions more of drugs to our little community, see what's going to happen to our kids, right? And what's 3% of a million dollars? Can anyone tell me what 3% of a million dollars is? That's what the town of Hanson's going to get from...
Thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, thirty, thirty thousand dollars. Thirty thousand dollars. Is that worth...
Please, hold on one moment, please. All discussion must go through me, not crosstalk. Thank you very much. Please continue.
Is thirty thousand dollars going to fund the recreation department? Is thirty thousand dollars going to fund our schools? I don't think so. Do the stinking math. It's not hard, people. My God. And then I just want to point out some quick facts. There's a 25% increase in cannabis use disorder among 12- to 17-year-olds in legalized states. Take that to your, your kids.
Please.
The more accessible marijuana is, the higher youth, youth use rate is, and that's a fact. They have studied that. It's been around in Colorado for a long time. They know all the details. Go to smarter approaches to marijuana, they understand what's going on in the world. The THC potency in marijuana has gone from 3% 30 years ago to an average of 17% and then with the marijuana edibles containing an average of 55% THC and some products as high as 99% THC. The higher the potency, the more addictive it is, especially to young developing brains, which they've compared to schizophrenia where kids who are using these products on a daily basis. You tell me that's harmless. Chronic adolescent marijuana use has been correlated with cognitive impairment and decreased ability to do well and work or school. The 3% impact fee that Hanson would collect on sales of recreational marijuana is minimal in comparison to the societal costs of public safety, school education, and early intervention drug programs. Have you heard of any drug programs with all this marijuana revenue coming into the state? I have not. I have not seen anything advertised. I don't know, if anyone can lighten me on that. And remember, again, that the 3% impact fee on a million dollars in sales is only thirty thousand dollars in tax revenue. Rockland has three recreational marijuana retailers and their town budget is still a financial mess. So don't tell me selling drugs is going to get us out of our financial mess. And selling recreational marijuana is not a cash windfall as some claim it to be. So please vote no on Article 26.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Joe Sullivan, 625 West Washington Street. I'm standing to oppose this article, a lot of reasons. I live in the corner county road in West Washington Street, that's one mile exactly from the liquor store. I pick up 100 nip bottles already of people that are obviously driving while they're drinking. So having people, there is no method of detecting somebody who's driving impaired if they're on marijuana. Secondly, I attended a workshop with State Senator Patrick O'Connor who's in Waymouth and he mentioned what the young lady before me already mentioned, that the South Shore Hospital has contacted him and they're detecting an increase in cannabis-related schizophrenia among youth. Also, one of the things he pointed out was with edibles, the labeling that now exists, for example, on a chocolate bar gives you the dosage per serving. So if you've got a large chocolate bar, that may be eight, 10 servings. They're picking up overdoses now also on the edibles and that. So, believe it or not, I don't oppose growing it here because it is a revenue source, but I do oppose both the retail, I don't want it in my town, I don't want the billboards in my town, and I oppose the distributing, distributing it to home too. So please vote this down.
Mr. Malisi, we're going to take some of the other people who haven't spoken yet. So, yes, please, ma'am.
Hi, Amy Gavin, Helen Drive. So I just wanted to say something about what you mentioned earlier, that the 40% of the town is over 55. So this is a great opportunity for us to increase our revenue. We want to build new fields for our students, we want to build new courts, we want to increase, you know, the school budget, we want to be able to take care of our kids. We also want to take care of that 40%. We need money. This is a small town. We only have Shaw's, Damien's, the Packer Store. We need more revenue. This is a fantastic time to take advantage of the revenue that we could take in from the marijuana retail store.
Mr. Malisi.
So, so I, I just want to make it clear here that, that special meeting Article 2 came from a recreation being funded with $40,000 worth of free cash. So yes, it is a fact that recreation can be, can be sponsored and subsidized by a retail marijuana taxes here. Also, Rockland had a cap on their retail marijuana option tax of $500,000 that goes back to the town. And from what I understand, they hit that cap on that. I'm not saying a million, I'm not saying that this is going to fix every financial issue that Hanson has. What I can say is unless, unless somebody who opposes this can come up with a better idea for us to get taxable revenue, revenue here that's not on the backs of the taxpayers of this town and their real estate taxes, I would be all ears to it because there's not. I looked for it. The dump, the dump needs money and, and it goes back to the trash bags and the sticker prices that are going up, right? I mean, this is, this is an option for taxable income here. If you don't do it, then don't do it, then stay away from it, just like liquor stores, just like cigarettes. It's the same thing. It's the same thing. And while you could say that, that, that kids, kids have been doing weed since the 50s, right? And they've been buying in school bathrooms since at least the 60s. I wasn't there, but I heard stories about it, right? So, but what I'm saying is these, these retail marijuana establishments that are here, you have to step into, you have to step on the door, you have to get your card scanned by a big dude who looks angry at you before you can even go anywhere through that. This is, this is, this is looted, this is, this is scare tactics that people are playing right now. This is scare tactics. Name one person that's ever overdosed and died from marijuana.
Okay. All right, Mr. Malisi, again, before we move the vote, this is a, we have people lined up, so I do want to hear from a couple more people. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Audrey Miller, 974 East Washington Street. As a nurse at Boston Medical Center and one of the largest substance use disorder treatment facilities in our area, I'm firsthand, I cannot say, a lot of people do need to do more research on the harms of marijuana, especially with people under the age of 26. But I'm not going to lecture on that, but I want to say is that my husband also owns a business that's right next to a cannabis facility on Rockland Street in Waymouth, and on Waymouth Street in Rockland. And it's a mess. It's a mess. The cars in and out of there, the, the traffic, the things going on, and yes, that's great business. But what do we also want our businesses in town? I understand we have a revenue problem and we have not been able to get good businesses here, probably because a lot of us aren't shopping at those little small businesses and maybe we need to change the idea of what we do as a community to support our small businesses. But what businesses are going to go in next to these cannabis shops also? And if we do want to get more revenue, what really is going next to the liquor store? What really is going next to the cannabis shop? So yes, we, we need some revenue and we do, you know, I don't think this is going to create a huge amount of revenue for our town. I don't think it's worth like destroying like what the possibilities are. But, you know, I, I think there needs to be a lot of really reflection on like what we do. Sure, I'd love to get rid of the liquor stores, but that's not going to happen. But that doesn't necessarily mean that I want the cannabis store right next to the karate place or, you know, in our downtown area. There, there is a place for it and I don't care that anybody smokes that's, you know, over the age of 25, honestly, because it's harmful for the younger brains. But it's just kind of thinking about what you want in your town.
All right. Now, this has been a great thoughtful debate. I just want to make sure that everybody's restricting themselves to something new. All right? So, yes, ma'am.
Just real quick, so somebody mentioned Rockland has, Rockland has three dispensaries. They're building a brand-new school. What does that tell you? We've got to do this.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, I'm sorry, Jane Downey, 500 Spring Street.
Thank you.
I just want to say that our police have been doing a DARE program for 20 years to educate our children to say no. And now we're opening up this dispensary to maybe make $30,000, which is not going to cover any of the medical expenses that we're going to run into down the road. And secondly, there is a reason that many, many industries are doing random testings because they know that it's harming the industries continually because they're off, you know, out of work all the time and things like that. It's affecting the work and that's why they're doing the random testings, plus being on the road, you know.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Amanda Rubens, Reed Street, which is also in very close proximity to Hawks Ave, is it? But that's for later. Anyway, so just some new things, I'm not going to say that we need the revenue, yada, yada. What I'm going to say is I've talked to Impressed LLC, who will fund the DARE program for the town of Hanson. So that is really all the new stuff right now that I wanted to say. They are trying to do everything that they can and I think recreational would come in and do the same thing. And thank you for trying to save my children. I have three of them. I got it, okay? I got it. I'll talk to them.
All right, we have people at this line for wondering. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Diane Cohen, 767 Pleasant Street. And Frank, you know, I love and respect you, but there's a reason you don't live in Rockland. And when you add this kind of thing into a town, it changes the dynamic of the town, it changes the look of the town, it changes why people move to this town. And I think that that's something that everybody needs to consider because once it's done, just like we did with the language, you can't undo it. It never goes back. You're naive to think if it ever would. And I am a teacher. I am seeing this. We have sixth graders getting high in the bathroom off of this stuff. And you know what? Maybe they're not overdosing, but they're going to get suspended three or four times and then they're going to get a lousy education because they're out of school so much. I don't care any way you slice it, there's nothing good coming from it.
All righty. Again, if we could just stick to what is new. Yes, sir. Go ahead, just introduce yourself.
Adam Average, 117 Cross Street. I just wanted to say that like, I feel it's important to be able to raise revenue for this town and I think that with these businesses being in place, we can fund programs that will help stop illegal use of marijuana, like people keep talking about, use in middle school, et cetera. This money would be used for funding infrastructure, funding police that would be able to help circumvent this issue. And honestly, we are in dire need of money in this town and if we, and this is a good way to be able to fund those programs, to be able to stop the illegal and dangerous drug use that would happen this, these taxes would help fuel a better ability to do so.
Thank you. Last speaker. Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Kevin, Spring Street. I just wanted to comment that we actually already approved manufacturing in the town and we have yet to see any income from that yet. So, so until we see an income from that, we, we should not move to the next step to do retail. We, we need to see how much we actually make from the manufacturer. The manufacturer quite possibly could make quite a bit more money than the, than the retailer ever will. And also to Frank Malisi's comment, what could fix the problem? Let's look into 40 R District. Thank you.
All righty. And with that, thank you. That was a very well-done, thoughtful exchange. All those in favor of Article 26, which requires a two-thirds majority vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
I'm in doubt. So, all those in favor of Article 26, please hold your yellow card up at this time. Nineteen. Twenty-one. All those opposed signify by holding up your yellow card now. Eighteen. Twenty-five. Fifty-two. So eighty-three, yay. Ninety-five, no. Article 26 does not pass. Hang in there, folks. We're almost there. So it's just page seventeen?
Yep, just one.
Okay. Article 27. I move the town vote to amend Section 6 of that Town of Hanson zoning bylaws by adding Hawks Avenue to the list of eligible locations for marijuana establishments excluding marijuana retailers as printed on pages, on, on page 17 of the separate handout. And Ms. Fedorov.
Okay. So, oh, sorry, second. So, again, looking at page 17, what this article is looking to do is to take the other marijuana establishment, so the cultivators, manufacturers, all the other facilities, not retail, and expand the area where you can cite those facilities onto Hawks Ave. That's the purpose of this article, so you know what's going on.
Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Yes. Hawks Ave, that's where all these mothers and their children and their carriages walk every day. And I'm telling you, the parking lot at the Burridge is crowded. So what you're, what you're saying is you want to make this place available for whatever marijuana dealings you're talking about. It seems incredible that you would put it where so many young people, especially little ones, young mothers, old people hike in the area. You want to put medical or whatever marijuana industry you're talking about on Hawks Ave. It's, it's absolutely crazy. And I don't know why it was put there unless it's by the people who are trying to manipulate things to get marijuana business in the city. Thank you.
Ms. Rain.
I just want to make, this is not the light control building you're talking about, right? This is just the street.
So I don't know how many properties run along Hawks Ave, but it's the entire length of Hawks Ave that would be an allowable location.
Because are we not working our way towards renting that facility to those pot growers? And that can't happen because of the deed?
I can't tell you what the plan is for Hawks Ave.
Okay. But I just wanted to make that point, that, that building is involved in this.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, Ms. Moderator. That is the only property on that street that this would be applicable to, is the light control building.
Mr. Scott?
William Scott, 328 Indian Head Street. Not to get into any history lesson or the background, I have over 50 years of public service. Started as a police officer here in Hanson in 1966. Many, many years later, I served on the Board of Health, and then subsequent to that, a member of the Board of Selectmen. During that time, I was a fortunate to be chairman of the Acceptance Committee for the Hawks Avenue property that was approached to us by the Hubble Company. A majority of the people at that meeting chose to present it to the town, and we presented an article so that the town would consider accepting it, which they did at the town meeting at that time after quite a lengthy presentation that I did. Later on, we formed a new committee called the Building Committee for the Highway Department, and that was to consider the Hawks Avenue, the Hubble property that was given to us as a highway department facility. Just for the record, I'm negative to all of these articles anyway, but based on all of the concerns that folks have. But in addition to that, what we're doing now is we're subverting a decision that was made by the town to accept the Hubble property, light control, call it what you want, for municipal purposes as stated in the deed, and to proceed towards a highway department, which we could get into a whole other discussion about the need for that. The current one we have is deplorable, and I won't go there. When I served on the committee, we did impact studies for traffic, we did impact studies for the potential for any spillage or anything down in the Hawks Avenue, and it would be far less than anything that we may currently have with our, again, as I say, a deplorable facility. We have the current salt barn or whatever. Where is that leaching to, Wampertuck Ponds? So, we could go on and on with the arguments over that, but I'm against this particular article because I, in my opinion, the Selectmen or someone dropped the ball on it. They've walked away from the highway building plans altogether. I was told by a member of the Board of Selectmen that we're going to tear down McQuarrie, we're going to disrupt the ball fields and move them over there, and we're going to build a highway facility where it is now. You're talking millions of dollars and five to 10 years of studies and everything. We did all of that, and I'd like to move forward. So, I'm basically asking the people to vote no on 27 to avoid the Hawks Avenue area to explore the use of a highway department and everything. So, that would be my position. I am, that's one of the reasons I am negative, negative to it along with the negative. I saw the impact of marijuana for close to 30 years as a police officer, and I'm negative and against that and opposed to that also. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say that Hawks Ave., or from where I'm standing to the far parking lot, that's probably as long as Hawks Ave. is. So, people, if you're picturing Hawks Ave. as being this long street, it's not. And it's a dead end. You can't go down there anyway. You go, you come to the end, a big barrier blocking you off. There's no way to get out, so it's a dead end street, and it's very short. So, just sort of get that picture in your mind. It's not spread out.
Mr. Campbell, did you have a final comment?
I did, yes. One final comment. I'd be remiss in my position, as well as my other planning board members, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that our town planner in a few nights, who was an engineer, sat down and redesigned the exact location where our highway department is now. So, to Mr. Scott, through you, Mr. Moderator, the plan at the time never looked at that. It just went right down to Hawks Ave.
If we could keep...
Sure. So, what we want to do is, I would implore everybody to take an opportunity here in the future to look at what is pending, what is going to happen, and Hawks Ave. just isn't feasible. Thank you.
And again, I'd prefer not to relitigate the light control property.
Hi, Kathleen N., Pleasant Street. Hawks Ave. does have the property that we did purchase, and everybody knows that. It needs to generate some sort of a revenue stream. I don't feel honestly that it should be some sort of a marijuana establishment. The town should perhaps reach out and see if there are any other businesses that potentially would put a bid on the property and see if they would want to lease it or convert it into something else. But to place that piece of property in a zone where it now becomes eligible to be a marijuana establishment is detrimental to the neighborhood, to the Burridge community of people that walk and ride and gather with their families. It increases the traffic flow, and it really brings the residential neighborhood quality of life down to a very low level. We've lived with light control, wheel reflect, and Northland Cranberry, we know what we're in for, but we don't need to expand it to something that may be running 18-wheelers with products coming and going at different hours of the day. If you don't live in that area, you don't understand it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ed Heel, 116 Pine Grove Ave. I find it interesting that, from what I understand, the only real business that can be bought or used for this on Hawks Ave. is the light control building. I'm not aware of any other property that can be used for that purpose. I'm wondering why that wasn't mentioned in the wording. Was that intentionally left out? I'm not sure. It seems like it to me, but I don't know. Is there other properties on that?
I understand from Mr. Campbell that that is the only property.
And that one is deeded?
There is, what are you saying?
I'm sorry. There is land there, too. We accepted the light control building as well as land. That's continued, I'm not on the planning board, they're the ones who proposed this article, but there is land there in addition to the building.
But is it my understanding, I mean, just reading this, it seems like there's a lot missing. Is there not a deeded, something in there that says it has to be used for municipal purposes? Is that in the deed?
That I can answer.
Ms. Federoff?
So, it might be delving a little bit into Article 29.
I'm looking at 27.
I know. I understand what you're saying. But you're asking about the deed for the light control property, which you asked if there was something in the deed that limited it to general municipal, because I was there for that transfer. So, yes, so that was a property that was gifted to us by whatever corporation?
Hubble.
Hubble. And in the deed, it was listed as general municipal uses as opposed to some other specific use, right? So, general municipal means anything in the municipal context as opposed to being more refined. So, you make it less restrictive by saying general municipal as opposed to like open space for conservation or something like that, right? And the question becomes, would that restriction prevent the town from using it for the purpose in this zoning article? And the answer is that would be subject to a separate conveyance of a stick of property interest essentially, which would happen in Article 29 if that's what the town were interested in doing. And so, like any other conveyance where there's a surplus, you're changing the use. Because then if that general municipal restriction restricted it forever, then you would never be able to sell off, for example, town property. So, circling around, and I know it's kind of mixing the two articles, but circling around, in order to effectuate that essentially conveyance of that property interest, so a long-term lease or something else, you would need a two-thirds vote because you're essentially changing the use. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess it does. I guess the people selling the land wanted it for your municipal use, and I don't think they meant they wanted a liquor store or even a playground, you know, maybe a playground or something. But municipal use, I don't think, is marijuana. That's just...
Yeah, I don't think they actually wanted it for any particular purpose, they just wanted to get rid of it. So, that's what I think.
Ms. Campbell?
Yeah, Mr. Heel, I think what you're thinking about is the exclusions on the use of that property, and those are really because there's contamination on that property. So, it cannot be used for a playground or housing, gardens, I mean, there's a whole list of things. But essentially, what they're saying is, we don't want people in the ground doing anything at the property. And they've cleaned it up. The DEP has overseen it, and it's gotten a quote-unquote "clean" bill of health by the DEP. But those are the exclusions are really, you know, that they don't want people gardening. For instance, that wouldn't be a great place for a community garden. So...
Mr. Scott?
If I may, and just in rebuttal to a few of the comments that were made, the committee that we served on did its due diligence, and we did a lot of research about that. And we did research the current facility for the highway department. Either they're expanding and rebuilding or something like that. And we felt that the size of the property as compared to the 11 acres that we were going to be able to use down at the Hawks Avenue location, that it was a much better approach to it. So, to say that we didn't look at it, that's untrue. We also looked at a lot of other areas. We traveled to a lot of different highway departments, and it's not here to discuss the highway building, but this is a big part of it because I'm negative to the article in that respect. Another thing that, what has happened with the Building Committee, very similar to this, other committees in this town did due diligence and attempted to bring a school to us back in that time. I mean, we know what happened with that, and I'm not here to be negative about that. I'm here to compliment the people that worked so hard to try to bring that to us. We worked awfully hard to bring a highway department to you, and now to just turn our back on it completely, that, to me, is a negative. And I really look at the board, somebody's dropped the ball on it, and I think we should proceed with it. That's why I'm really against the article, and I certainly don't appreciate people putting words in my mouth as a regard of it.
All righty. And I think we've picked this bone. So, Article 27 has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay.
Nay!
That one was fairly clear. So, Article 27 fails to achieve two-thirds majority vote and therefore is not adopted. Article 28. I move the town vote to amend Section 6 of the Town of Hanson zoning bylaws by allowing marijuana delivery operators and marijuana couriers in industrial zones and certain other eligible locations as printed on the pages of the separate handout.
Page 25.
Page 25. Now, second it, please. Can you second that? Thank. Would you like to explain this, Ms. Federoff?
Okay. So, turning to page 25, this deals with the citing of marijuana delivery operations, okay? And there are two types, and I want to be, first be clear, this doesn't have to do with just delivery from places outside of the town. This has to do with actually citing a delivery facility. So, what that consists of for a courier, a courier here because now retail is prohibited, would essentially have computers and things like that in its, in its office space, and they would pick up marijuana from a marijuana retailer and deliver it to the consumer's residence. A delivery operator is a little bit different, so they could pick up marijuana from either a grower or a manufacturer or retailer. They actually purchase the marijuana for themselves, and where it could be called, I don't know, Blue Marijuana from when they purchase it, and they turn it and they can relabel it and call it Green Marijuana and sell it as their own product, right? It would be something more interesting than that name, but they would sell it as their own product. So, that's the difference between a courier and an operator. An operator can also store the marijuana inside their warehouse because they need the area to also repackage, or not repackage, relabel the marijuana, okay? So, this would allow the citing of that kind of facility in the town, okay?
Probably silly to ask this, but any questions or comments? Wow, okay. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote. So, all those in favor of Article 28 signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay.
Nay!
I, we have somebody who's challenging, I haven't made a decision yet. How can you challenge what I haven't done? That's right. Well, I am going to find that Article 28 on the voice vote did not have required two-thirds majority vote. Now it's being challenged, and therefore, all those in favor of Article 28, please hold up your yellow card at this time. Oh, pardon me, sixteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Thirty-two. All those opposed to Article 28, please signify by holding up your card now. Oh, I don't think it matters. No, it's two-thirds of the people in attendance. Not two-thirds of the entire.
Ten.
I'm sorry, ten? Ten.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Fifty. Wow.
Sixty-seven to eighty-six, sixty-seven.
Say that again?
Sixty-seven to eighty-six, you're not bad. But please, double-check my math.
I don't think it would pass either way, but I, my understanding is it's sixty-seven to eighty-six. Article 28 does not pass. Article 29. Do we have a motion? Well...
I'd like to make a motion to move Article 29 as printed in the informational warrant. This gives the Board of Selectmen...
One moment. Do we have a second? Seconded.
So, this gives the Board of Selectmen the option to lease that property for 20 years. So, let's turn, let's say the highway study gets completed in October, they feel like it's not feasible, right? This would give the Board of Selectmen the option to lease that land, and now that there's no Hawks Ave. marijuana delivery, maybe a mechanic can go in there, or maybe a school bus operator, or maybe, you know, a gardening center like Mrs. Kimmitt wanted to do, so. I'd just, I'd like to make that motion because I think this is actually important, so.
All right. So, the motion having been made and seconded, any further questions or comments? Mr. Scott?
William Scott, 328 Indian Head Street. I'd like to speak in opposition to this, and once again, as I stated earlier, to my opinion, the Selectmen have dropped the ball on the highway project, and by entering into leases down there for that property, I don't think that would be the right interest. How many, may I ask, how many voting members are here tonight?
Well, that...
I understand that. I'm asking...
One moment.
Yes, sir.
The question had already come up. It's, I don't have an accurate count now because people have obviously left. But the way the two-thirds would operate is it's two-thirds of those voting. So, not everybody who's eligible to vote in the room votes. For instance, I never vote on articles, so...
The reason I brought that up, Mr. Moderator, the school ended up as a referendum vote. We understand how that went. A lot of hard work, as I said, went into it. A lot of hard work went into the highway department. It ultimately should be decided by the whole town, not 150 or 200 people that are here tonight. That's my opinion, but thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Amanda Rubens, 304 Reed Street. When I sit on my back deck, I look across the train tracks, and I see 100 Hawks Ave. Literally, I look at broken windows. So, if we can't use it for the highway, which, let's finish that eventually and decide, if we can't use that, please do something with it. Let the Selectmen lease it to somebody, anybody that is willing to clean it up and make it so people don't drive back there. I hear awful things all night long. I hear teenagers in cars, I hear burnouts, I hear all the things we want to save our kids from. So, just let them do something with it. If it's not the highway, we'll give them the authority to do something.
Mr. Hayes, we haven't heard from you yet.
Mr. Moderator, just a point of order. I believe town meeting has quorum count of 150, and for...
So this is not saying that the highway department won't go there. If the study passes and the highway department's feasible at that particular location, then the highway department can go there. I don't necessarily agree with it going there, but what this will do is give the Board of Selectmen the option, if that is not a possibility, to lease that land for 20 years. If we're not going to use it for highway, it's just going to sit there and dilapitate. So we should at least give the Board of Selectmen the option if they so desire with your elected representatives to enter into a 20-year lease that would generate money for the town. It's the theme of this night. It's called money and that's one of the things that we need. If we're not going to spend it on highway, going there, lease the building or do something else with the land.
Ms. Kimmitt.
Yes. So if you look at the warrant, you'll see that the Board of Selectmen had voted to pass this over. And the reason that we had voted to pass it over is we had a lengthy discussion at, I believe it was our last Selectmen's meeting, about just what was the status of the Highway Building Committee and where were we at in terms of getting closure and putting a bow on that. And we have not finished that. And so I understand, you know, that we voted to fund a 450, I want to say $453,000 study, $350,000 of which is, has been spent. But we haven't, we're not done yet and so I recognize that definitely as a board, we need to put a bow on that. But I would say one of the difficulties has been that the town accepted this property because people were told it was going to cost $1.25 million. And the price tag the last time that we looked at this, and one of the things that's causing like generalized anxiety about it, is we're looking like eight to 10 million and that was pre-COVID. And that doesn't even include the cost of tearing down and cleaning up the old building. So when we're talking about funding and we're talking about, we don't want overrides and we don't want tax increases and all of that, but we want a new highway department and we want it at Hawks Ave, it isn't going to be 1.25 million. We were sold a bill of goods at that Town Meeting. It's going to be quite a bit more and that's been part of the struggle with the board of getting closure. We will work on doing that. We definitely owe it to people to do that. Things were waylaid with COVID and a bunch of other things, but we definitely will pick that back up and get some closure on it.
Yes, sir.
Dan McDonough, Carriage Road. I don't have an opinion so much. I was wondering if I could make an amendment though from 20 years. I'll be close to retirement by that time. Can we amend that to 12? And then that way it gives you slack to do your job as a board and get businesses in the town, but also depending on what business gets passed, maybe we don't want to tie that for 20 years. That's my thought.
We have a second on that.
It's just the maximum. It's not a defined term.
Do we have any further discussion on changing it from 20 to 12 years? In that case, all those in favor of the amendment to change the number 20 to the number 12, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. The amendment has not passed. To Mr. Powers, please.
Hey, Patrick Powers, 255 Holm Street. So for about six or seven years, I've gotten up and talked about the need for revenue in this town. We as a town just voted down several revenue opportunities and I understand the reasons behind why, but every year, I've had to get up as a citizen, not as a member of any committee, and say, okay, we kind of told you so. At this point, we're passing over more significant revenue opportunities, potentially. It's great if we can have a highway department go there. It'd be great if we could use it for some other resource, but the reality is that hasn't happened yet. The costs have continued to skyrocket. So for the naysayers that vote no on our revenue sources, on your way out, look at your police officers, look at your fire departments, look at your teachers, decide which ones you want to be jobless. Because that's where we're heading as a town. We are eating through our free cash to fund an operational budget and that is unsustainable. So if you do your household budget, when you go significantly into credit card debt, at some point you have to pay those bills. And that's where we are heading. Regardless of how, if you want a great business, don't look at the four or five people on the stage on one side or four or five on the other. Pick up the phone and call businesses. Actually volunteer and go do something versus pointing and playing the blame game at some folks. In the end, it's the folks in this room in this side of the stadium that get to decide what happens in this town. The reality is the folks up on the stage have no power, right? Because it's these folks that vote. So we've passed over revenue, so I implore you, let our select board, right, try to find a revenue source. If you don't want retail marijuana in the town, fine, but we have to find something else. So the reality is we're going to have to cut services. So when you get up next year or the year after and complain about taxes going up, look to the folks that vote no on revenue sources. Because the reality is, that's what's causing this problem. That's it.
Yes.
Kathleen Neath, Pleasant Street. I had a question about the cleanup. You, well, if someone hypothetically were to rent the property or lease it, say, for however many years that we all agreed to, would we as a town be responsible to clean up that contamination before somebody came in and leased? Or would they be taking that on themselves to be a business and they agreed to do that? Would we have to finance that?
Ms. Kimmitt.
Yes, through you, Ms. Moderator. The portion that's light control has been certified as, you know, I hesitate to say this, but it's to the DEP, you know.
To the standards?
It's to the DEP satisfaction of cleanup. Again, would you want to be planting your garden vegetables there and harvesting them? Probably not. But I don't think we would be in the business of leasing and we certainly wouldn't want to move our highway folks up there if we really thought that there was a serious health condition of people inhabiting that building, right? I mean, we care about our highway guys too much. We know they've got a bad building, but we don't want to move them to a toxic environment. So it's not, it's not to that degree and I think.
I just wanted to make sure we're not liable.
Pardon?
I just wanted to see if we were liable for it.
I mean, you know, that's, yeah. I guess we'd have to make sure that the lease was properly worded and probably do some due diligence. We're not all the way there yet on not using the property for highway. So we've got to probably close that chapter and then if, you know, that doesn't pan out, then we'll look at this.
Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Scott? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dyer.
So I have two points I want to make. One is, let's talk about the highway plan. We have hired an engineering firm to go through and make engineering plans for Hawks Avenue. But if you look at Hawks Avenue, it's a pretty plain sight, pretty level, and the most of the legwork that was done over the course of four or five years, maybe beyond, was asking the highway department, what do you need to be successful? What is your dream highway department going to look like? And over the course of the last four or five years, that's what they have done. They have worked with an engineer to develop these plans and the nice part about plans is for the most part, you can pick them up and put them in a new location. And with being a flat area up on Hawks Avenue, we also have some other flat land here in the Town of Hanson that we can put this highway department there. One thing as a Selectman, that one thing that drives me up the wall as a Selectman is how long things take in municipal government and especially in a town government form like such. We have to wait six months to make a decision like we are making a decision tonight. This decision is allowing the Board of Selectmen at a future time to request, or an art, request for proposals, have businesses send in their proposals of how they would like to lease the property. And then the board gets to decide whether or not that's a good fit for the Town of Hanson or not. We're not giving away the property tonight. We're allowing the Board of Selectmen in the future to look at the possibilities of something and speed up that process so we can get some revenue to help our community. Thank you.
Mr. Scott.
If I may, just to clear up a couple of quick things, while we were doing the studies and everything down there, we worked closely with the Department of Environmental Protection. They went above and beyond to certify all of that property as being reasonably clean and you're saying you can't have your gardens and your houses down there. We all know that. It's all been designated for conservation. When we first talked to Hubble when they offered the property to us, that Bob Brown was still alive at that time, they were negotiating with a marijuana manufacturing, not manufacturer or growing type of facility, to rent those big buildings for that. And they felt at the time it was not in the best interest of the town and that's before all of the current situation that we are dealing with now. Another area that was taken out of concept, during the time when we were doing the studies, and I'll end it, I know you want to get on with the vote, we were getting a lot of questions, what's this going to cost? What's this going to cost? At that time, we reached out to a building contractor that got involved with renovating large buildings for municipalities and things, and they said, could you give us an estimate of what it would cost to renovate that? They came up with a million five to renovate one building. Ever since we've had Town Meetings talking about that, there's people that are standing, oh, you said a million and now it's going to cost us eight or 10 or 12. We hadn't discussed infrastructure, we hadn't discussed charles sheds, sorry. Tons and tons of items were not discussed at the time. It was the one billion, a building, excuse me, for a million five. And everybody's kind of hung their hat on that, that we told them that and now here we are up in the eight, 12 or 20 million dollars. We don't know now what it's going to cost, but, so that was taken out of context and I'd just like the folks to know that. Thank you.
Move to the vote. So all those in favor of, oh, and once again, this requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of Article 29 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it by the required two-thirds majority. Do we have a motion for Article 30?
Yes. Kevin, Spring Street. I move the town to vote the proposed initiative petition to amend the current recall, Chapter 93 of the Acts of 2019 as follows or take any other action in relative thereto.
One moment. Oh, I'm sorry, were you done with your?
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say as stated in.
Okay, as needed, thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded. Mr. Cohen.
The explanation, the reason for this initiative petition is to reestablish the right of the voters of the Town of Hanson to establish their own grounds of recall, a right that we once had from 1982 through 2019, when the current recall law was removed and the rights established restrictive reasons for grounds of recall for the current recall law that we have now. So what I'm asking for tonight is a vote to reinstate the previous recall law. Because the way it is now, basically, if you needed to remove someone, you would have to bring them to court, which that litigation could cost the town quite a bit of money and they would continue in their seat while the litigation was going on. Also, if they were found to be at fault for their wrongdoings, it could also take years and by then the Selectmen or other elected official would be out of the seat. So I move to vote.
Okay. Now, before we go on, there are some people lined up. We've run into trouble discussing the recall at this very Town Meeting in the past. So before we get on with the debate, I do not want to relitigate any past recall elections. You know, obviously, any recall is a painful one, it divides the town, there's no need to dredge any of that up. So please keep your comments directed to Article 30. Mr. O'Sullivan.
Thank you. Joe O'Sullivan, 625 West Washington Street. I stand in opposition to this. The toxic political arena in this town is causing good people not to run for those seats up front. People should only be recalled for malfeasance, misfeasance, or non-feasance, not because they took votes in doing their job that some of you didn't like. We've seen that happen here twice and I'm not relitigating. Please vote this down.
Yes, sir.
Jim McGann, Beachwood Road, Hanson. As many of you know, I was a Selectman, I ran on that campaign of a recall. I ran under these, this change that we're asking to revert back. I had a rather negative experience during my time and tenure as a Selectman, in which I found out that somebody was essentially said that if you ever want to change or influence another Selectman's vote, simply pull recall papers on them. That is to influence and intimidate somebody. That's what somebody was using this recall law for. And it was applied to me at that time. Sticking to what you said, Sean, we basically changed the rules to provide some guidance and what reasons and rationale on why you would use a recall, okay? Seven reasons. Conviction of felony or listed misdemeanors by mass law, admissions to facts while in office sufficient to be convicted of felony or misdemeanors, violation of conflict of interest laws. And there are 29 sections in that area, okay? Attend less than 15% of the posted public meetings of the board in which they serve. Lack of fitness and sobriety while performing official functions, involuntary commitment to mental health facility, being placed under guardianship or conservatorship under probate court, corruption, conviction of felony involving moral turpitude, conviction of bribery or extortion, violation of law, regulation of bylaw, or other abdication of applicable requirements for the elected position. Key point here in that our bylaw now says, the elected officials' vote on a matter other than in connection with the conflict of interest law shall not be grounds for a recall petition, okay? We put these, we put this place, this is not something that we rewrote folks, okay? We modeled the Town of Norwalt's recall bylaw. It was, we didn't rewrite anything on this. They had a very good bylaw, we applied it to our town and the reasons why. And we use it now to protect our officials, to be able to have ideas and present them without feeling that they need to be under duress or influenced negatively, okay? Look, I know no recall's perfect, I get that, all right? But there are two significant changes to this that would basically impact it. And basically, one of them, if I'm not mistaken, and I read it correctly directly from the article, any holder of the elected office in the Town of Hanson may be also recalled and removed, and removed from the office they hold by the qualified voters of the town who shall have the right to establish their own grounds for recalling an elected public official. Five years ago, when we talked about this at this very same month, we said we could recall you simply because I don't like the color of your shirt. Sean, I could recall you because I saw you smoking medical marijuana down the street, right? So the point here is, what I'm trying to say is, and the other change that it talks about are the number of, the numbers regarding the petition. Right now, this one says that they just want 300 qualified voters, okay? Our current bylaw says 150 per precinct with 25 qualified voters per precinct. I stand against this article. I'm asking you, ladies and gentlemen, please, with all due respect, vote this down, allow our elected leaders to operate in the manner which they're intended to do. This helps the town move forward from the things that Joe just spoke of. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Moderator, I was a six-time elected school official, that's 18 years. I was the chairman for 15 years. Every time we went to build a school or talked about it, I was getting threatening phone calls, you're going to get reelected, you're going to get recalled. I'd go to the dump and there'd be people up there getting signatures, don't do this, don't do that. Putting this, changing this recall law is a disaster. It's tough enough to get five people that are up there running. We're fortunate this time that people want to. But I ran six times unopposed. If I didn't run, that seat might have gone vacant. It's a bad change. It really is. It becomes a popularity vote after the vote. It's not right. It doesn't protect officials that are not getting paid. Those five people there and those five people there don't draw a salary. It's not fair because some people in this town determined, ah, we didn't, in fact, we even had people that wanted silent votes. A few years ago, you had to write the vote on a piece of paper and I'd run around and collect it because if you voted against something that a certain group didn't like, next week they were recalling you. It's not democracy. It's pressure that's undue elected officials. Ladies and gentlemen, please vote against this. This is very bad and whoever proposed it is dead wrong. They weren't an elected official, I guarantee it.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Jim Toomey, 67 Gorham Drive. I'm against this. These people are all volunteers, they do a hard job.
It's not fair because some people in this town determine, ah, we didn't, in fact, we even had people that wanted silent votes. A few years ago, you had to write the vote on a piece of paper, and I'd run around and collect it, because if you voted against something that a certain group didn't like, next week they were recalling you. It's not democracy, it's pressure that's undue elected officials. Ladies and gentlemen, please vote against this. This is very bad, and whoever proposed it is dead wrong, they weren't an elected official, I guarantee it.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Jim Toomey, 67 Gorham Drive. I'm against this. These people are all volunteers, they do a hard job, and they have to tell you sometimes some hard things. And they can't do these things if they're constantly looking over their shoulder worried about offending one or two people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Malisi?
So I second in Kevin's, Kevin's Assistant's petition, because I appreciate that he had the effort to go do a Assistant's petition, actually start the process. I'm, I'm not in support or against this particular thing, I don't know enough about it. The question I have for Kevin is, so, what, what brings about this petition, and, and is there, does there need to be a specific reason on the recall, I would, I would call it the flyer, the recall flyer, why somebody needs to be recalled?
And I think, Mr. Cohen, perhaps this will bring the debate to an end.
Sure. I, I did want to point out that I actually am an elected official, I am on the planning board right now, so that actually would include the planning board, it would include the Selectmen, it would include any elected official, just so everyone's aware of that. But, anyway, some people are aware that we've actually had some issues in town, and I think some people have brought quite a few to light about some other issues, and that's why I put in there to establish some grounds for recall, because it's pretty ridiculous to think that anyone would recall somebody for their tie color or any other strange instance like that, because it, there's a lot of effort that it takes to get signatures as people know that have run for any office in town. I do agree that more people do need to run for office in town, but there's, they shouldn't be afraid to run for office in town, of, you know, what they stand for. So, I would, would like to add that, in our current recall law, if, if an elected official does personal business for their own gain or their relatives' gain and are found guilty and get, get a maximum fine from an ethics commission, for instance, the town would have to take that person to court to recall them. Or they have to be proven that they did something criminal, which would take years most likely, and cost the town money. Thank you.
Mr. Powers, and then we'll finish this up.
Yes, so Patrick Powers, 255 Holm Street. I, I'm not disagreeing with the purpose of this article. I think it's a little too wide open. There are folks in this room who have threatened me and threatened my family, made accusations on social media, attacked me privately through social media, and I know every single person sitting at those tables have experienced that same thing. So, again, I'm, I'm not against updating our recall laws, but I don't think this is the language to do it if we want to have folks get up there. Even now, we say, oh, we've got a great Board of Selectmen election coming up, there's what, two or three people running?
Four.
Oh, four, yeah, out of 10,000 people, there's four folks. And unfortunately, we have folks that use their community resources to attack some of the folks that are, that are running, right? Even the folks that are elected or volunteering, we have folks in this very room who have posted disgusting things, both personal and private, out in the community. They've called members up there, they've called their places of employment to attack them because of their personal opinion. That's not how democracy runs. The folks that do that are absolutely disgusting human beings, in my opinion. Again, if somebody uses one of those offices for personal gain, if somebody uses one of those offices for a criminal intent, they should absolutely be recalled. The good part is, there's a lot of stuff in the current law that allows them to be recalled, so if we want to update this, I'm not against it, I just think it needs to be hashed out a little further down the road, so that's my personal opinion.
Ms. Kimmitt?
Yeah, I echo a lot of what Mr. Powers said, and through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Cohen, I think it's a bit disingenuous to say that you have to be convicted of something. There's provisions in our current bylaw that would permit, if, for instance, the state were to find you had violated ethics, and you were not within six months of an election, you could be removed for that reason. So there are, there are reasons, and one of the things that would concern me is, for instance, the situation on Spring Street. People really wanted this board to act in a certain way, but we were being given very strong legal counsel telling us, you need to proceed with caution. And that's an exact case where well-intentioned but angry people would file a recall law on a Board of Selectman who's trying to protect the town legally from not getting sued by a developer, so would get, we'd get caught in a crosshairs, where we're trying to do the right thing, but we'd end up getting recalled for trying to do the right thing under your revised bylaw. Under the existing bylaw, there are sufficient reasons why a person could be removed, and perhaps to Mr. Powers' point, maybe, maybe there could be additional things added that would be articulated, but I really beg you not to go back to the way things used to be. I have personal knowledge of people who have been threatened, you just heard from people up here who have been threatened, and it's happened time and time again, and if you wonder why you don't have decent people running for elected office, that's why.
Mr. McGann?
I, I agree completely, Laura, thank you very much for that. You are exactly right under our current, under our current bylaws. We have, there's a sections of, the 29 sections, very lengthy, that will allow you to recall somebody for any ethics violation. And as far as taking them to court, the only part that I saw in this was that you need to get confirmation from Town Council within five business days. So, to Mr. Powers, to yourself, Laura, and through you, Mr. Moderator, I agree wholly, and I ask again with respect, please vote this down. Thank you.
All right. And we are moving to a vote. So, all those in favor of Article 30 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those oppose nay?
Nay!
The nays have it, Article 30 is not adopted. So, just one last announcement, do not forget, please come out May 21st from 10 to 5, right here at the Hanson Middle School for the election. I now adjourn the annual Town Meeting sign down.